Mangakababayang ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Tayang magiliw. Kana. Umay buhay, kumpang hinihinga. Uyag ka ng mahiting sa manlulupe. Ikapasi si Dill. Sanagadang tutok sa siboyan, salali kawpawgao. Ayunadang tulagawin sa pantayang inamahal. Ang isagatang kawatuyan, kumaynag at iningin. Ang pituhin at tarong yakaylar, ang ayiba kibiling. Lupa ng araw ng waragik pa si Krapo. Uyag ang it sa piling ko. Ang inigaya na partay ng napi. Alpamagay ng kahil sa'yo. Singulang on hanggang ngayon. Isang naging layon. Magkaisaan magkulong. Karitinang may manugtong. Mayroon tayo mula sa hamon ng nakaraan. Diyaku sa paganim na buhan lang. Inagaku sa musu at paliniwala. Ang ihawang para sa kabataan. Bangsamoro ay tagumpay. Bula ng pawis sa buhat buhay. Napayapan, katahukan. Ay atin ang nakantay. Alhakdiliga, alhakdiliga. Papalay bangsamoro. Bangsamoro, bangsamoro. Lagi kang mamahalig. Walang pipigil sa damdamin. Mga pangako'y tutuparin. Ang buhay kami sayoy magpatay. Mananatili sa puso't isipan. Ang kahapung munim kay nagbuwis ng buhay. Nasa piling ka ng may kapal. Bangsamoro ay tagumpay. Bula ng pawis sa buhat buhay. Napayapan, katahukan. Ay atin ang nakantay. Alhakdiliga, alhakdiliga. Papalay bangsamoro.
The Secretary General's directed to call the roll.
Roll call of the Honorable Members of the BTA Parliament. Abbas Aknat. Abbas Harun. Abbas Basid. Abdul Mujib. Alamia Laisa.
Present.
Ali Ibrahim. Ali Lanang Junior. Ali Eddy. Ambuluto Suarto. Aminogen Abdullah Jiz. Ampatuhan Baintan. Anayating Susana. Antao Muhammad Kelly. Arnado Marian. Asnawi Dan. Babao Ali Muntaha. Balindong Pangalian. Basman Anna Tarhata.
Present.
Present.
Dumama Albasya Ilaiha. Ibrahim Ahud. Esmail Suarto. Estino Matarol. Gayak Abdawa. Guera Edward. Haji Abdawa Khalid. Hasim Abdawa. Hassan Hatimil. Ekbal Mohager. Esmail Rasool. Jajuri Raisa. Jakilan Muslimin. Hikiri Al Bakil. Kahalanden Martin. Karen Faisal. Nin John Anthony.
Present.
Loong Don. Loong Don Mustafa. Lorena Jose. Makapar Abdawa. Makasalong Marjani. Makatanong Amrousi. Maglangit Tarhata. Malik Hamid. Mantaul Bayling.
Present.
Matalang Jatara Pulo Mikael. Mawalil Anil Bahar. Mendoza Broilin. Midimbang Michael. Midimbang Tawakal. Miswari Abdul Karim. Miswari Nur Reda. Mitmo Grasal Junior. Munius Josein.
Present.
Korannon Swain. Pakasam Ubaidah. Bahad. Pangandaman Nabila Margarita. Marcasio Randolph. Piang Ramon Senior. Ramos Jamila. Salindab Sa'id. Salik Ali. Sanki Ali. Semao Mariaser. Semar Romeo. Sik Sa'id. Nilungan Aida. Sinulinding Kadil Junior. Lehman Ali. Tagu Paisalin. Tan Nabil.
Here.
Usman Azbar. Utu Basil. Uyoyod Sitifahani. Yakub Muhammad.
Bismillah, huwamin astaghfirullahi 'salamu alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, with fifty-one members of the parliament physically responded to the call, and eight responded via Zoom, we have a total of fifty-nine members of the parliament present in today's session. Mr. Speaker, we certify the presence of Corom. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
With that certification, we can now proceed with the agenda, the order of business for today. Majority Leader?
Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Chair, and my cortices to our speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, and to our fellow members of the parliament, good afternoon. And we are very happy that we have a very good attendance this afternoon. And Mr. Speaker, to start with our order of business, may I move that, before that, Mr. Speaker, may we recognize our visitor who are here with us. We have former SGA area coordinators, Mr. Ibrahim Rahman from Piggawayan. Can you stand up to be recognized, please? And we also, we have with us Mr. Duma Maskood from Mitsayap One Cluster. And we have with us Mr. Mentok from Mitsayap Two Cluster. Mr. Jimmy Adele from Pikit Cluster Three. Mr. Abdullah Tip Chago from Pikit Cluster Two. Mr. Arnold Timan from Pikit Cluster One. Mr. Habib Jabar from Kabakan Cluster One. Mr. Arupin Magid from Carmen Cluster One. And we have Mr. North Simindog. Thank you and welcome.
Welcome to your BTA Parliament of the BARM. Welcome. Your presence is most welcome.
Mr. Speaker, I will also move that we amend the order of business to include the committee report of the Committee on Finance and Business, Finance Budget and Management on the SGA deals. So we include in the committee report number thirty-six, number thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-five, and thirty-two.
Those are all committee reports?
Yes, this is in relation to the finance report on the SGA deliberation on the financial aspect of the SGA deals.
Your motion is to amend the order of business to include the committee report of the Committee on Finance?
Yes, yes, Mr.
With those numbers, corresponding numbers. There any second? There any objection? Here stands, same as hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To start with our order of business, may I also call on our, we have a very important guest with us this afternoon. We have invited the Executive Vice President of the SGA. We have invited the Executive Vice President of the Integrated Bar of the Philippines, Attorney Alan Panolong. Early on, we issued a resolution congratulating our very own Paniero, who is elected to the as EDP of our Integrated Bar of the Philippines. And so we are very happy that he is here to personally receive our resolution. So may we request him to be to... May I move to suspend the session to give way to all members?
The rules, not the session.
May I move to suspend the rules, Mister Speaker?
The rule is suspended to allow our guest to receive personally. Hindi ito matakas sa atin. Welcome. Call on the speaker to please, Amina.
Resolution, resolution. Yes, Mister Speaker. Republic of the Philippines, Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao, Bangsamoro Transition Authority Parliament, Bangsamoro Government Center, Cotabato City, Second Regular Session. Whereas the Integrated Bar of the Philippines IBP is officially, is the official organizations of all Philippine lawyers whose names appear in the role of authorities of the Supreme Court. It is mandatory bar associations for Filipino lawyers whose purpose is to elevate the standard of the legal professions, improve the administration, its public responsibility more effectively. Whereas the IBP is administered by a governing board consisting of nine governors representing the nine regions of the IBP, which elects the IBP's national president and IBP executive vice president for within or outside the board. Whereas under the IBP bylaws, the executive vice president shall automatically become president for the next succeeding term. The presidency shall rotate among the nine regions. Whereas on May twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, Attorney Alan G. Panolong, year-two, president of IBP Lano del Sur chapter, and at the same time, the governor of the IBP Western Mindanao Region was elected as the new IBP Executive Vice President, who in time shall automatically become president of the IBP National in twenty-twenty-five, making him the very first Muslim Bangsamoroto head the IBP. Whereas the executive vice president elect is a native of the province of Lano del Sur, a former board member of the second district of the province, a good son of Haji Amexair Mapandi Gani and retired major Tomabilang Gunda Panolong, loving husband to Doctor Mursida Alonto Panolong, and affectionate and devoted father to Imran Gibril, Radja Fariz, and Anya Zarina. Whereas the elections of Attorney Alan Gani Panolong brings honor and pride to the Bangsamoro region. Whereas it has become the policy of the Bangsamoro Parliament to give due recognition to the Bangsamoro people who bring honor and prestige to the Bangsamoro region. Whereas, as a token of appreciation of Bangsamoro Parliament, it is but proper to express through this resolution its utmost congratulations to Attorney Alan Gani Panolong. Now therefore be it resolved as hereby resolved by the Bangsamoro Transition Authority Parliament to express utmost congratulations to the newly-elected Executive Vice President of the Integrated Bar of the Philippines Attorney Alan Gani Panolong. Resolve further, this resolution be presented to Office of Attorney Alan G. Panolong for information. Signed, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Speaker of the Bangsamoro Parliament. So request the other principal authors or co-authors to join the picture taken. Authors and co-authors are requested to please join the picture taken with our guest.
The suspension of the rules is now lifted. We resume normal proceedings. Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. We are now on item number six in the order of business. I move that we suspend the reading of Journal number fourteen of July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
Second. There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal of?
July, number fourteen of July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
Number fourteen, wala akong copyrito. Fourteen, may I have the agenda? July fourteen, twenty-twenty-three. Is there any second? July seconded, do I hear any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to approve Journal number fourteen of July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
There is a motion to approve the journal of July fourteen?
Journal number fourteen of July twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty-three. Do I hear any second? July seconded, do I hear any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, we are now on item number eight, seven, under reference of business. For bills on first reading, may I request the Secretary General to read BTA Parliament Bills number two-three-three, two-three-four, two-three-five, and up to two-three-five on first reading, Mister Speaker?
Two-three-three, two-three-four, and two-three-five. May I direct the Secretariat to read the first read, bills on first reading, bills number two-three-three, BTA Parliamentary Bill two-three-four, and BTA Parliamentary Bill two-three-five, including its title and authors and co-authors, please.
BTA Parliament Bill number two-hundred thirty-two entitled Unestablishing the Bulldoun General Hospital with Twenty-Five Bed Capacity at the Municipality of Bulldoun, Province of Magindanao del Norte, and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Authors, Members of Parliament, Suarto Ambuluto, Suay Buranan, Baintan Ampatuan, and Isyak Mastura. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Lysa Alamiya, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Rasul Ismail, and Don Mustafa Luong. BTA Parliament Bill number two-hundred thirty-four entitled Unestablishing General Hospital with Twenty-Five Bed Capacity in Municipality of Sultag Mastura and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Authors, Members of Parliament, Suarto Ambuluto, Isyak Mastura, Abdowwa Habb, Suay Buranan, and Baintan Ampatuan. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Lysa Alamiya, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Rasul Ismail, and Don Mustafa Luong. BTA Parliament Bill number two-hundred thirty-five entitled Unestablishing Tumbao General Hospital with Twenty-Five Bed Capacity in the Municipality of Kabuntalan and Appropriating Funds Therefore. Authors, Members of Parliament, Suarto Ambuluto, Isyak Mastura, Suay Buranan, Baintan Ampatuan, and Hashimi Dilanggalena. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Lysa Alamiya, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Rasul Ismail, and Don Mustafa Luong.
Majority Leader, these are bills on first reading.
Mister Speaker, considering that these are private member bill, may we request the members of the Parliament to request to co-author to please file the necessary form that is in your kit right now?
Those who wish to co-author, may fill up the form that is given to us in our pamphlets. Next.
Mister Speaker, we are now on item number B, Resolutions, Messages, Memorials, and Communications. May I request the Secretary General to please read Proposed Resolution three-six-four to include its title, author, and co-authors?
The Secretary General is directed to read Proposed Resolution three-six-four to include the title, author, and co-authors.
Proposed Resolution number three-hundred sixty-four entitled Resolution prohibiting the use of vaporized nicotine and non-nicotine products. Example is cigarettes, vapes, in any indoor premises of the Bangsamoro Government Center, BGC, except in designated vaping areas, DBAs. Author, Members of Parliament, Baintan Ampatuan. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Lysa Alamiya, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Suarto Ambuluto, Don Mustafa Luong, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Rasul Ismail, Tawakal Midimbang, Japara Pollo Mikael Matalam, Michael Midimbang, and Basir Utuk.
Mister Speaker, I move to refer this resolution to the Committee on Health.
Committee on?
Health.
Health. There is a motion to refer this proposed Resolution three-six-four to the Committee on Health. July seconded, is there any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved. Next.
Moving on to item number two, may I request the Secretary General to read Proposed Resolution three-seven-three, including its title, author, and co-authors?
The Secretary General is directed to read the Proposed Resolution three-seven-three, including the title and the author, the author and the co-authors.
Proposed Resolution number three-hundred seventy-three entitled Resolution Directing the Committee on Health to Conduct Inquiry in Aid of Legislation on the Integration of Local Health System as Provided by Section Nineteen of RA eleven-two-two-three, otherwise known as Universal Health Care Act. Authors, Members of Parliament, Suarto Ambuluto, Baintan Ampatuan, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Isyak Mastura, Khalid Haji Abdowwa, and Susana Anayatin. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Lysa Alamiya, Rasul Ismail, and Don Mustafa Luong.
I move to refer this resolution to the Committee on Health.
There is a motion to refer this proposed Resolution three-seven-three to the Committee on Health. Do I hear any objection? Second, July seconded, do I hear any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
Moving on to item number three, may I request the Secretary General to read Proposed Resolution three-seven-four to include its title, authors, and co-authors?
Before that, may I call our colleagues to please observe properly the call and be modulate your voice to also as not to take away the focus we have. Thank you very much for your compliance. Please proceed.
Proposed Resolution number three-hundred seventy-four entitled A Resolution Directing the Committee on Environmental Resources and Energy to Conduct Inquiry in Aid of Legislation on the Implementation of the Banning Single Use of Plastics in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao Barm in accordance to Memorandum Order Number two-eight-five, Series of Twenty-Nineteen. Authors, Members of Parliament, Suarto Ambuluto, Baintan Ampatuan, Amil Bahar Mawalil, Isyak Mastura, Kadil Sinulindik Junior, and Sitifahani Uyoyod. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Lysa Alamiya, Rasul Mitmog Junior, Rasul Ismail, and Don Mustafa Luong.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer this Resolution three-seven-four to the Committee on Environment, Natural Resources, and Energy.
There is a motion to refer this proposed Resolution three-seven-four to the Commission on Environment, Natural Resources, and Energy. July seconded, do I hear any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
Moving on to item number four, may I request the Secretary General to read the title, author, and co-authors of Proposed Resolution number three-eight-two?
The Secretary General is directed to read Proposed Resolution three-eight-two to include its title and the author and co-authors?
Proposed Resolution number three-hundred eighty-two entitled A Resolution Urging the Ministry of Transportation and Communication to Strengthen the Implementation of RA eleven-three-one-four or the Student Fair Discount Act in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region and Muslim Mindanao and Ensure Strict Compliance There Too. Authors, Members of Parliament, Margiani Makasalong and Eddie Ali. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Randolph Marcasio, Sid Sheikh, Abdullajis Amin Uden, Den Martin Kahalan, Alay Muntaha Ba, Abdowwa Habb, Basit Abbas, Susana Anayatin, Marian Arnado, Michael Midimbang, Ali, Salik Hatimil Hassan, Albakil Dikiri.
Mister Speaker, I move that we refer Proposed Resolution three-two to the Committee on Transportation and Communication.
There is a motion to refer the Proposed Resolution number three-eight-two to the Committee on Transportation and Communication. Do I hear any second? Do I hear any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved. Next.
We are now on item number five. May I request the Secretary General to please read the title, author, and co-authors of Proposed Resolution number three-eight-six?
The Secretary General is directed to read the Proposed Resolution.
Proposed Resolution number three-hundred eighty-six entitled Resolution Directing the Ministry of Health, MOHs for Region to Live the Mandatory COVID-nineteen Swap Test Required. Co-authors, Members of Parliament, Marian Arnado, Ambrosi Nakatalo, Ramon Piyal Senior, Shailai Haluma Alba, Margiani Makasalong, Matarol Estino, Susana Anayatin, and Anna Tabha Tabasman.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that...
Majority Leader.
Hello. Mister Speaker, I move that we refer Proposed Resolution number three-eight-six to the Committee on Health.
There is a motion to refer this Proposed Resolution number three-eight-six to the Committee on Health, July seconded, do I hear? to the Committee on Health, Julie Seconded, do I hear any objection? Chair here is none, same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, may I now turn over the floor to our Majority Floor Leader?
The Floor Leader is recognized. We will now be on item eight, based on second reading.
Mr. Nabi Alaa, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu.
Alaykumusala.
My curtsies to the honorable, ah, Speaker, Attorney Tangali Ang Bagintong, Deputy Presiding Officer, Deputy Speaker, Attorney Lambitan, Deputy Speakers, Members of the Parliament, guests, and staff who are in the gallery. Good afternoon, we are, ah, on, the, on, ah, commit, we are now going to present Committee Report Numbers Twenty Four, Twenty Five, Twenty Six, Twenty Seven, Twenty Eight, Twenty Nine, Thirty, Thirty One, Thirty Two, Thirty Three, Thirty Four, Thirty Five, Thirty Six, Thirty Seven, Thirty Eight, and Thirty Nine, Mr. Speaker. For Committee Reports Number Twenty Four to Thirty One, these are submitted by the Committee on Local Government pertaining to BTA Parliament Bill Number One Two Nine entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Bahamudin Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes."
BTA Parliament Bill Number One Hundred Thirty Three entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Kapalawan Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." BTA Parliament Bill Number One Thirty entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Kadayangan Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." BTA Parliament Bill Number One Three One entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Nabalawag Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." BTA Parliament Bill Number One Thirty Two entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Tabakan Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." BTA Parliament Bill Number One Hundred Thirty Four entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Malidagaw Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." BTA Parliament Bill Number One Thirty Five entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Nabalawag Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." BTA Parliament Bill Number One Thirty Six entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Legawasan Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." For Committee Report Numbers Thirty Two until Thirty Nine, these are submitted by the Committee on Finance and Budget and Management in relation to BTA Parliament Bill Number One, Numbers One Two Nine until One Hundred Thirty Six, Mr. Speaker. With the information that as of ten o'clock in the morning today, the Chief Minister has transmitted to the Office of the Speaker the Certificate of Urgency for passing all these, ah, bills, Mr. Speaker. I now move to consider, ah, the bills for today's this celebration, Mr. Speaker.
You now move for?
The consideration of this committee reports, Mr. Speaker.
The consideration of the following committee reports as enumerated for deliberation.
Yes.
For adoption.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize?
Julie Seconded, is there any objection? Chair here is none, same is hereby approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, to present the committee reports from the Committee on Local Government, may we request Member of the Parliament, Engineer Aida Silongan, Mr. Speaker?
The Honorable Minister of MOSD and, ah, Member of the Parliament, Aida Silongan is recognized.
Ausdila, I'm Shaytani Radja, misnila, Rachman Rachim. Mr. Speaker, Deputy Speakers, Floor Leader, and Deputy Floor Leaders, esteemed colleagues, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuhu.
Alaykumusala.
Mr. Speaker, as the Committee on Local Government Subcommittee on SGA Bill's Chairperson, I have the honor to present to you Committee Report Number Twenty Five.
The Twenty Four.
Ah, we, we suggest that, ah, all the six ah, municipalities who complied with the local government, ah, requirements will be tackled ahead and then the last two bills will be, ah, later. Ah, within this day also, but on the later part.
Proceed.
So we suggest that the Committee Report Number Twenty Five will be tackled first. And, Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Local Government-
What happened to Committee Report Number Twenty Four?
Will be tackled later.
Okay.
Titled later.
First. Proceed.
Committee on Local Government to which the BTA Bill Number One Thirty Three, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Kapalawan Appropriating Fund Therefore and for Other Purposes," has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the BTA and recommends its approval with the following amendments. The Committee on Local Government to which was referred BTA Bill Number One Thirty Three is, Secretariat, is plus the-
Plus it on the-
Committee Report.
To guide us.
The Committee on Local Government to which was referred the BTA Bill Number One Thirty Three introduced by the Government of the Day entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Kapalawan Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." So has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the BTA and recommends its approval to the following amendments. In Section One, delete the phrase, "Internal Revenue Allotment", and in layo thereof, insert the phrase, "National Tax Allotment", to be consistent with the Twenty Eighteen Supreme Court Decision on Mandanas Das Garcia Case. In Section Two, change the word "areas" in special geographic areas to area. In Section Three, insert the word "new" before Municipality of Kapalawan. In Section Five, insert the word "requirement" after Libisip in the title of the section. In Section Six, change the word "election" in commission on election to elections. In Section Seven, insert the phrase, "With Due Regard to Presentation of Women of the Bangsamoro", after the phrase, "appointed by the Chief Minister in the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw." In Section Eight, delete the phrase, "Internal Revenue Allotment", in layo thereof, insert the phrase, "National Tax Allotment", in the title and in section itself. In Section Nine, insert the phrase, "The Bangsamoro Organic Law", after the phrase, "Republic Act Num, Number Eleven Zero Five Four". And in Section Ten, delete the phrase, "Except those that declare any part of this act unconstitutional and contrary or contrary to the provisions of the Bangsamoro Organic Law." And in Section Eleven, rename the title of the section, "Effectivity of the Law to Effectivity." So, Mr. Speaker, ah, those were the amendment on the, ah, original, ah, bill. So after the thorough deliberation of both Committee on Local Government and Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, we submit the proposed municipality meets all the qualifications in terms of population as certified by the Philippine Statistics Authority, or PSA, the income as certified by the Provincial Treasurer of North Cotabato, and land area as certified by the Ministry of Environment and Natural Resources. That being said, we ask for the members of the parliament parliament's support to this, ah, passing of this bill, insya Allah.
Majority Leader, the Floor Leader.
Committee Report.
The Committee Report Number Twenty Five, Bill One Thirty Three.
Yes, ah, Mr. Speaker, may we request, ah, the Subcommittee Chair to please continue of the committee reports under the Committee on Local Government, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And for the, Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Local Government to which BTA Bill Number One Thirty "An Act Creating the Municipality of Kadayangan Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes" has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the BTA and recommends its approval with the following ammen, amendments per Committee Report Number Twenty Six. The Committee on Local Government to which referred, to which was referred BTA Number One Thirty, introduced by the Government of the Day, entitled, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Kadayangan Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes," has considered the same and has the honor to report back to BTA BTA and recommends its approval with the following amendments. On Section One, delete the phrase, "Internal Revenue Allotment", and in layo thereof, insert the phrase, "National Tax Allotment". And, ah, in Section Two, insert the word "the" before Municipality in the title of the section. Hmm, in the same section, change as, and in Section word "new" before Municipality of Kadayangan. And in Section Six, change word "election", the Committee Action to Elec- In Section Seven, insert the phrase, "With Due Regard to Representation of Women in, of the Bangsamoro", after the phrase, "appointed by the Chief Minister of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslimindanaw." In Section Eight, keep the phrase, "Internal Revenue Allotment", and insert the phrase, "National Tax Allotment". In Section Nine, insert the word "Bangsamoro Organic Law", after the phrase, "Republic Act Eleven Zero Five Four", and insert number in between Act and Eleven Zero Five Four. In Section Ten, delete the phrase, "Except those that declare any part of this act unconstitutional or contrary to the provisions of the Bangsamoro Organic Law." And in Section Eleven, rename the title of the section, "Effectivity of the Law to Effect, Effectivity." So those were the changes or the amendment, Mr. Speaker, ah, for the Bill, ah, Number One Thirty, based on the Committee Report Number Twenty Six. So, Mr. Speaker, after thorough deliberation of both Committee on Local Government and Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management, we submit that the proposed municipality meets all the requirements in terms of population on, ah, ah, income and land area as, ah, ah, certified by, ah, different of the government. That being said, we ask the members of the parliament support, Mr. Speaker.
Continue.
Majority Leader.
Continue.
Okay, so, we will continue to, ah, Committee Report Number Twenty-
Bill One Two Nine. Bill One Two Nine?
Yeah. Committee Report Number One, ah, Number Twenty Four, Mr. Speaker, is the committee reported on the local government code with BTA Bill Number One Twenty Nine, "An Act of Creating the Municipality of Bahamudin Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes", and has considered the same, and we will report back this to the honorable, ah, Parliament. So, the Committee on Local Government, ah, to which was referred BTA Bill Number One Twenty Nine introduced by the Government of the Day entitled, "An Act Creating Municipality of Bahamudin Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." So for, ah, except for the title, almost all the amendments are the same, ah, Mr. Speaker. So I'll just read the amendment on the title, only the spelling.
Introducing the omnipuse amendments to all the committee reports. The same, ba, same, la?
Yes, yes, po.
Proceed.
Exa, yeah, except for, there, there are some that there were changes.
Just to follow.
Okay. So only the spelling of Bahamudin, Mr. Speaker, and the others are almost all the same. And, ah, another one next. So the next report is the Committee Report Number Twenty Seven and, and, ah, be, under Bill Number One Three One. Mr. Speaker, the Committee Report on Local Government to which the BTA, BTA Bill Number One Three One, "An Act of Creating Municipality of Nabalawag Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes" has also considered the same. So, ah, the only changes here is, ah, from original, ah, name of Kabalukan, after the, ah, consultations with different stakeholders, it, it was changed to Nabalawag. So there, there is, ah, there are no more changes. So, Mr. Speaker, ah, we submit to this August body to support the same, ah, bill, the Bill Number One Three One. The next bill to be considered is, ah, Bill Number One Three Four with the Committee Report Number Twenty Nine, "An Act Creating the Municipality of Malidagaw Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes." an act creating the municipality of Malidigao appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. So same with the others, uh, uh, the correction, uh, the amendment here is in the name. From the original name of Malmar, it was amended to Malidigao. Malidigao. And the set of government.
And yet, parin sa title, huh?
Yeah, yeah, title parin, sir. And the set of government is, uh, changed to Port Pikit. So yun lang po 'yung nabago sa Bill Number 134. And then we will proceed with the other bill. The Bill Number 135. Committee Report Number 30. Bill Number, BTA Bill Number 30, 135 and act creating the municipality of Tugunan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. So same, uh, no, no amendment for the name and for other, except for those, uh, uh, like the other, uh, where there, there were insertions. So common, th- those are common, uh, amendments to all the bills that was read already, Mr. Speaker. And so, the next bill is Bill Number 136. Bill Number 136 is Committee Report Number 31. BTA Bill Number 136 is an act creating the municipality of Ligawasan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. So nothing changed also, expect, except for those common, uh, amendments of the other uh, bill which was read already. And the last bill that will be considered is BTA Bill Number 132 under Committee Report
35.
Number 28.
35, BTA. Bill 1132.
Bill 132.
Is
Committee Report 28.
Committee Report 35. The Committee Report 28.
132, Committee Report 28.
132 is
Committee Report 28.
Okay.
An act creating the municipality of, uh, Kaabakan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. So that was the, that is the title of the bill. So there is a change in the name, the proposed name from Northern Kaabakan to Kaabakan. And the set of government was also changed from Peddad to Nangaan. So those two or, uh, amendment, uh, same with the others, there, there, there are common, uh, amendments also. So... So, Mr. Speaker, after I submit the, all the committee report uh, for the eight municipalities of, uh, geographic areas for consideration of this, uh, August body. Thank you very much and Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, uh, Aida, Minister Aida Siloan. Majority Leader, the floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, thank you very much. Uh, before we, um, move for the adoption of the committee reports of the Committee on Local Government for deliberations, Mr. Speaker, may we request the, uh, presenter for the committee reports of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management to please take the floor and explain and present the committee reports of the CFBM. May we recognize MP Ubayda Pakase, Mr. Speaker.
The Minister, Minister of Finance, MP Ubayda Pakase, Bydex is recognized.
Speaker, Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. As one of the vice-chairs of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, I am submitting Committee Report Number 36, Mr. Speaker, uh, on Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Bill Number 133 recommending its approval with amendments. Uh, Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management to which, uh, was referred BTA Parliament Bill Number 133 introduced by the government of the day entitled an act appropriating the municipality, creating the municipality of Kapalawan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes has considered the same and recommends its approval with the following amendments. First, section six of the proposed measure is hereby amended to read as follows.
And we suspend for three minutes.
Uh, proceed. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management to which was referred BTA Parliament Bill Number 133 introduced by the government of the day entitled an act creating the municipality of Kapalawan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes has considered the same and recommends its approval with the following amendments. First, section six of the proposed measure is hereby amended to read as follows. Section six, conduct of plebiscite. The Commission on Election through the Bangsa Moro Electoral Office shall conduct and supervise the plebiscite. The expenses in holding the plebiscite shall be taken out of the current fiscal year appropriations of the Bangsa Moro government subject to availability of funds. Number two, section eight of the proposed measure is hereby amended to read as follows. Section eight, financial assistance and pending entitlement to internal revenue allotment. The Bangsa Moro government shall appropriate and provide financial assistance for the administration and operation of the municipal government of Kapalawan every month until such time as the, as the new municipality shall have been allocated its share in the internal revenue allotment subject to the availability of fund. The copy of the amended version of the proposed measure is attached to this committee report for reference. Respectfully submitted officers and members of the Committee on Finance, Budget and Management, Mr. Speaker, so submitting this, uh, committee report Number 133, uh, Mr. Speaker.
We note the committee report with amendments.
Mr. Speaker, the same report is reflected in BTA Bill Number 130, uh, that is the act creating the municipality of Kadayangan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. This is reflected in Committee Report Number 133. In Committee Report Number 34 on BTA Bill Number 31 an act creating the municipality of Kabaluk, it was amended into Nabalawak in the CILG report appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. In Committee Report Number 35 on BTA Bill Number 132 an act creating the municipality of Northern Kaabakan which was already amended as Kaabakan in CILG report appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Committee Report Number 37 on BTA Bill Number 134 an act creating the municipality of Malmar which was already amended in CILG committee report as Malidigao appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Committee Report Number 38 on BTA Bill Number 135 an act creating the municipality of Tugunan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Committee Report Number 39 on a bill Number 136 creating the municipality of Ligawasan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes and Committee Report Number 32 on BTA Bill Number 129 or an act creating the municipality of Bahamudin appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I am submitting all these committee, uh, reports, Mr. Speaker, pertaining to the eight, uh, bills, Mr. Speaker, on SGA municipalities.
So you have covered all the eight bills?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much uh, for that committee report, uh, Minister of Finance, uh, committee report on finance. What is the pleasure of the gentleman from Magindano del Sur? Del Sur Bata?
Pleasure. Thank you, Ba, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The relation on this, uh, enumerated number of committee report. It appearing, Mr. Speaker, that, uh, the issue on Ligawasan Mars, Committee Report Number 31, it said an act creating the municipality of Ligawasan appropriating funds therefore and other purposes. This is Committee Report 31. As you look further, Committee Report Number 39 is the same topic. So there are two committee report on the same issue an act creating the municipality of Ligawasan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. The concern of this representation is that, uh, it appear that there are two committee reports on the same topic and the same issues and concern. Committee Report 31 and Committee Report 39 are why there are two committee report on the same issues.
Thank you very much. Uh, will the leader, ma, the floor lead, the query that there are two committee reports for one municipality? I think the committee report on local government and committee report on finance are two separate for the same municipality. Kaya nagkaganyan.
But the title of the committee report, this
Oh, uh, reported by two committees. A committee this to cover the financial requirements.
But all the other municipalities were not, that do not have the same two committee report, except Ligawasan Mars.
Pwede bang sagotin natin si Kakahali?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
The floor leader, please report, please reply.
Uh, with all respect, all of the committee reports are, uh, in counterparts, Mr. Speaker. Meaning there's a committee report coming from the Comedian Local Government that has a corresponding committee report from the Comedian Finance and Budget and Management, Mr. Speaker.
The public.
Except, oh, because there are supposed to be eight municipalities to be created. But only Ligawasan Mars have two reports. But if you look into the title of the committee report, all the wording are the same. Uh, this is just an observation, Mr. Speaker, and I think that's all that I can make. I am not a critic to discredit the, the author of this, but as a matter of procedure, uh, I think, uh, we must be clarified on these issues and concern.
Please clarify to the honorable gentleman from Magindano del Sur.
Uh, if I may, your excellent, your speaker. Committee Report Number 31, it said an act creating the municipality of Ligawasan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes, Committee Report 31. Now on Committee Report Number 39, it's the same wording, word for word, an act creating the municipality of Ligawasan appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. You cannot distinguish whether it is a Comedian Finance or Comedian Public or any other committee, except it's a committee report. The same topic, word by word, per bottom, the same wording, but it is of the same, it is not of the same committee report number. Uh, this is just the concern of this representation. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there is any question to be made, uh, it will be okay. I, I share the view that we are working, remember, we are working as a team and anything that you will do here will be judged by the, by the public. So it is just a concern of this representation. Uh, thank you very much.
We reserve what judgment the public will have until we are done with our work. Thank you, Bab Kakali.
Will, will it be okay, General, General, uh, floor leader?
The, 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 the leader, not the one in, at the worries.
Thank you very much.
As a matter of procedure, don't, don't talk directly. The floor leader will please answer.
If I may
Very much, Mr. Speaker.
I may point out that it's in the order of business. It's actually It's actually in the order of business that...
Is there a redundancy?
No, Mr. Speaker.
There is none?
None, Mr. Speaker.
On the same subject matter, same municipality, two, two committee reports, there is none?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, that is correct.
Bakit siya nalilito?
Um, may we, yes, uh, invite the Honorable Member of the Parliament to please check the order of business. Thank you to the colleagues who are helping out, uh, to figure out. Yes, um, Mr. Speaker, Member of the Parliament, Abbas would like to, is it a manifestation, Mr. MP?
MP Abbas is recognized.
How would I, Mr. Tano Agim, Mr. Rafaunah Agim? We're now discussing about the municipality of Ligawasan. To me and to other, to other residents of this, uh, area, uh, uh, the creation of the municipality of Ligawasan is not, uh, is not, uh, uh, wrong because we are, we, we do the process. And the practice I mean is that, uh, the Local Government decided to pass the name. After that, after giving the name, so there was a consultation. Yes, there, there was a consultation done in Pagalawan, headed by Atone Miran Arado. So I think there is no question about the creation of, uh, municipality of Ligawasan. So for your information, even where the demand for the province of Ligawasan Mars, uh, nobody can comment, only, only Pagalawan. So I think we, we decided to create province of Magindano, no, nobody can, yeah.
Floor Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I now move to adopt the committee reports as reported, Mr. Speaker, for deliberation, Mr. Speaker.
There is now a motion to adopt the, all the committee reports on the different bills for deliberation. Is there any second?
Can.
Uh, duly seconded, is there any objection? Chair hears none, same is heard by approve.
Mr. Speaker, I, uh, would like to ask for a, a, a break, 20-minute break, Mr. Speaker.
20 minutes break is granted.
After moving for the adoption of the committee reports and after the approval of such motion, Mr. Speaker, I now move to consolidate the following committee reports for expediency, Mr. Speaker. For BTA bill...
We are not adjourning, no? We are not preparing. We are not preparing, we are just consolidating on...
Yes, Mr. Speaker, and even without speaking the specifics, there was already a second.
Let me just state for the record that this is very unusual. The committee report should have been consolidated. Should have been a committee report of the local government and finance. However speaking, wala naman pong prohibition, magulo lang. Kaya si Kakaali kanina, nasan na 'yung matanda?
Ito dito.
Ayan. Kaya naguluhan siya, pati ako naguguluhan eh. So tama ka, Kakaali, wag ka na magsalita, ako nalang. Tama ka, medyo aminado naman sila na dapat. Kaya hindi dapat maging presidente ito, hindi dapat maulit. Dahil nakakatawa, eight bills with sixteen committee reports, imagine? Pero strictly nga, may nagsabi sa akin na hindi naman bawal ang separate, magulo lang siya. And most congress do not or parliament doesn't do this. So let us refrain from repeating this kind of reporting the committee's work. Thank you very much, the floor leader, may now proceed.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consolidate for BTA bill number 129, committee report numbers twenty-four and thirty-two, Mr. Speaker, I so move.
There is now a motion to adopt committee report number...
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four on BTA bill number...
One-two-nine.
One-two-nine for deliberation, di ba?
Committee report number thirty-two to be consolidated, Mr. Speaker.
And committee report number?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, for same subject matter?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
For consolidation. Is there any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
I move to consolidate for BTA bill number one-three-zero, the committee report of the local government committee number twenty-six, Mr. Speaker, and committee of finance committee report number thirty-three.
Committee report...
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six and thirty-three?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And committee report on finance number?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
Counterparts po sila, so 'yung local government...
Anong number ng isa?
Twenty-six.
Tignan mo, naguluan na. Julie, there is now a motion to consolidate committee reports numbers...
Twenty-six and thirty-three.
Twenty-six and thirty-three. That's the committee report of local government and finance.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Julie seconded, is there any objection? Naririnig ko si Kalia. Hearing no objection, same is hereby approved.
For BTA bill number one-three-one, Mr. Speaker, I move to consolidate the committee on local government committee report number twenty-seven and the committee on finance committee report number thirty-four, Mr. Speaker.
Committee report number twenty-seven and twenty-four to be consolidated.
Thirty-four.
Huh? Thirty-four?
Yes.
Hindi twenty-four. Senior na talaga. Julie, there is a motion to consolidate the BTA bill report, BTA bill one-three-one report, committee reports twenty-seven and thirty-four. Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
For BTA bill...
Sure, I was unnumbering ah?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi, na-double check ka na?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
For BTA bill number one-three-two, Mr. Speaker, we move, I move to consolidate committee report number twenty-eight from the committee on local government and committee report number thirty-five from the committee on finance, Mr. Speaker.
Thirty-five?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to consolidate committee reports twenty-eight and thirty-five. Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
For BTA bill number one-three-three, I move to consolidate committee on local government committee report number twenty-five and committee on finance committee report number thirty-six, Mr. Speaker.
Twenty-five and thirty-six. There is a motion to consolidate the committee reports on BTA bill number one-three-three, committee reports twenty-five and thirty-six. Is there any objection? Is there any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Pag walang objection, wag na kayo magsalita. Same is hereby approved.
For BTA bill number one-three-four, I move to consolidate committee on local government committee report number twenty-nine and committee on finance committee report number thirty-seven, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to consolidate the reports of the committees, BTA bill number one-three-four, committee reports number twenty-nine and thirty-seven. Is there any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
BTA bill number one-three-five, Mr. Speaker, I move to consolidate committee report number thirty of the committee on local government and committee report number thirty-eight of the committee on finance, Mr. Speaker.
Committee report thirty and...
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight on BTA bill one-three-five. There is a motion to consolidate the committee reports thirty and thirty-eight on BTA bill one-three-five. Is there any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Pag mairengay kayo, retrieve kayo na subjection. Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
For BTA bill number one-three-six, I move to consolidate committee report number thirty-one of the committee on local government and committee report number thirty-nine of the committee on finance.
There is a motion to consolidate committee reports thirty-one and thirty-nine of BTA bill one-three-six. Is there any second? Is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, for the consolidated committee reports for twenty-four and thirty-two, on BTA bill number one-two-nine, I move to open the period of deliberation and debate and interpolation, Mr. Speaker.
So now start the deliberation. There is a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate on BTA bill one-two-nine of committee reports twenty-four and thirty-two. Meron bang mag-iinterpetate o wala na?
Mr. Speaker, there is a, in the interest of time, may we all together consider the committee reports as consolidated, Mr. Speaker, and then allow the interpolators to make their interpolations based on the BTA bill number?
I adapt muna natin ang consolidated reports ng lahat ng walong bills. And then...
And then the interpolators can specify the committee report that they want to deliberate, they want to interpolate, Mr. Speaker.
Hindi natin need to take up one by one. We have to take that up, it's subject matter of different committee reports and therefore we should treat that independently.
Okay, I submit, Mr. Speaker. So we move to, I move to open the...
Yung one-two-nine.
Period of deliberation and...
There is a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate on BTA bill one... Objection, chair here's none, same is hereby approved. The period of interpolation and debate in so far as BTA bill number one-two-nine, subject matter of committee reports twenty-four and thirty-two is now open.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize MP Bayintan Nampatuan as the first interpolator to be followed by MP Jamila Ramos.
MP...
Jamila Ramos. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To be followed by MP...
Bayintan and Matalam?
Ramos.
Ah Ramos, Jam Ramos.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. In the...
The gent, the lady from Magindanao is recognized, Bayintan Nampatuan. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I know that some of us have been requested to or receive some texts with regards to this interpolation, but, um... Mr. Speaker, I just want to open up some information which might not be known to everyone because not all of us is part of the two committees, Mr. Speaker. I myself did not participate in any of the proceedings with regards to the eight bills, Mr. Speaker. I don't know anything about what happened in the two committees that's not present in the committee on finance meeting, so I have no information really about this. Mr. Speaker, if you will allow, I have an omnibus interpolation with the eight bills. Just to educate all of us, especially with regards to the sixty-three barangays, where those sixty-three barangays belongs to the eight newly created, to be created municipalities. But before that, Mr. Speaker, I would like to ask the proponent of the...
The floor leader. Please proceed.
Yes, I am requesting that I have omnibus, not focus only on the two bills, at two consolidated, but it's the entire, because it will be the same with the other.
So, Mr. Speaker, what I, from what I gather, the interpolator would like to enter questions on all of the committee reports pertaining to the different bills, Mr. Speaker. Is that correct, Mr. Speaker? Yes, Mrs. Speaker.
Is that correct, madam?
Only one interpolation for the entire eight bills.
Only one interpolation for the entire eight bill, proceed.
Yes, Mrs. Speaker. I would like to begin, Mr. Speaker, with identifying, Mr. Speaker, sixty-three barangays. And we all know that the sixty-three barangays are spread to several municipalities in North Cotabato. But based on the committee report, it's not clear to me how many of the barangays of the sixty-three barangays went to the municipality X, municipality Y, municipality Z. So may we request the proponent, and I have conferred already with the proponent, just to educate all of us, no? For example, in the case of the municipality, of the Alyosan, we only have two barangays and therefore they cannot be created as one municipality. Now the question is, for the two barangays of Alyosan, where did they place, no, in the new setup? So I would like to request the proponent to educate this parliament as to the spread of the sixty-three barangays with regards to the new eight municipalities, Mr. Speaker.
This sponsor may answer.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The secretariat will flash the detailed number of barangays per municipality. So we can see it in the screen that the Kapalawan is from municipality of Carmen with seven barangays. And Northern Kabakan is from municipality of Kabakan with seven barangays. And for Malidagao, they have, this is from Pikit municipality with seven barangays, all from Pikit. For Tugunan, there are nine barangays, but eight barangays are all from Pikit except one from Alyosan. And for municipality of Nabalawag, there are seven barangays, six out of seven is from Izayap and one barangay is from Alyosan. For municipality of Kadayangan, all from Izayap. And for Ligawasan, Kadayangan have seven barangays, all from Izayap. And for Ligawasan, seven barangays, all from Pikit. That's make the total of all sixty-three barangays.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. To me now, this is clear that the barangays of Pikit, for example, is now created into three municipalities, Mr. Speaker. And for the Alyosan, two barangays were spread to Nabalawag and the new municipality of Tugunan. So it is very clear now. Unfortunately, Mr. Speaker, in the annex one of the report, some of the barangays, for example, the Alyosan, which is already part of Nabalawag, the barangay Dongguan is not part of the committee report. And in due time, Mr. Speaker, I will propose for the amendment to include that. And the barangay of Makasendeg in Pikit is not also part of the committee report. Barangay of Tapudok in Alyosan is not also part of the committee report. And I will propose for the correction or amendment to this committee report, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
The next, excuse, Mr. Speaker, shown to the screen were the names of barangays from, for every municipality. That was corrected already.
But the report that is given to us, Mr. Speaker...
Yes.
I know that the correction was made earlier...
Yes, yes.
But based on our records, it is not reflected, Mr. Speaker. In due time, just to correct the record, we will propose for amendment.
Yeah, I prefer to place common to the eight, no?
Yeah, that...
But for each municipality, proposed municipality, individually natin it tackle. Ah ba'yon?
Actually, Mr. Speaker, medyo tapos na tayo dun sa ano, yung naayos na natin 'yung sixty-three barangays. Sa atin, sa napunta, 'yung lahat ng barangay ng Pikit ay nabuo ng tatlong municipyo. And that information is not, is new to me and maybe perhaps to all the audience, no, na hindi kasama sa meeting. So that is a very important information to all of us.
Very good.
Mr. Speaker, may I proceed with my...
Please proceed.
Question, Mr. Speaker.
Unless may answer si Aida?
Meron na, it was answered already, Mr. Speaker.
We have incorporated the missing barangays. That is due to typo error of the secretariat.
Kailangan very careful tayo sa typo error.
Yes.
Baka fatal yan.
We deliberated this so much in the subcommittee, but due to the typo error of the secretariat.
Okay, please proceed, Bayintan.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, my next question is, we know that there were groupings based on the presentation, Mr. Speaker. But we would like to know what are the rationale in coming up with the groupings that says that this is municipality of Pahamodin, this is municipality of Kadayawan? Was there, were there correct criteria used in the groupings that have used in order to come up with this proposal, Mr. Speaker?
Basis for the groupings?
Yes, Mr. Speaker? If I may allow...
Please proceed.
As far as I know, it was due to consensus among the communities where they want to belong among the municipalities, especially those who has many, who have many barangays, like Pikit. So, they, they cluster themselves according to, uh, contiguity as much as possible, and, uh, where they can be, uh, easily group.
And, 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 um, in, in relation to that, Mr. Speaker, may I proceed, Mr. Speaker? Uh, in the groupings that we have, um, did we consider the requirements of the law? And if I may ask, uh, what are the requirements of the law in order to come up with, uh, municipality, a new municipality?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, uh, we all comply the requirements, uh, from the MMA Act. Uh, we have the requirement of, uh, for population, uh, ten thousand, and for the income, one million. And for the land area, thirty thousand, uh, thirty square kilometers.
Thirty.
So, these are the bases for, for the MMA Act, uh, twenty-five.
So, um, in the absence of the government code of the Bangsa Moro, uh, we are using the MMA Act,
Yes.
number twenty-five,
Yes.
uh, in this case,
Yes.
and not the local government code of the Philippines.
Yes.
So, only the MMA Act?
Yeah, we use the MMA Act. Although we know that six out of eight already comply the requirement of the local government code.
Okay, so that's very clear, we use the MMA Act. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, so, um, in, in the, uh, you mentioned that there are three, no? There are three requirements, uh, for the creation of the municipality, which is the population, income, and land area. Uh, Mr. Speaker, my question is, did we obtain all the these requirements, uh, um, through a certification coming from appropriate, uh, agencies, national agencies, uh, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, if, may we allow MP Kili Antao to answer?
Lifeline. MP Kili Antao is, uh,
Yeah, this, uh, he, he is also one of the proponent of this bill.
Minister, minister, MP Antao is recognized, eh, Kili Antao, talaga.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. As far as the certifications concerned, as far as the land area is, uh, we ask the certification from the DNR 12 of the local management, uh, uh, land, land management services, and that of the main three. Then as far as the, the population is concerned, we ask the certification of the regional director of the Philippine Statistic Authority. And as of the income, we ask the application from the provincial treasurer of the province of Cotabato.
Okay, so, for example, for the land area, Mr. Speaker, according to the committee report, um, a map of the proposed municipality, for example, of Kadayangan, with the total land area indicated therein, was confirmed by Sultan Kaidar Esambari, the chief survey and mapping division of the DNR Region, Regional Office Number Twelve. Mr. Speaker, may I know what is the requirement of the law as specified in either of the MMA or in the local government code?
As far as the law is concerned, seventy-one sixty requires fifty square kilometer. But in, uh, in, uh, uh, MMA Act is only three thirty square kilometers. So, all of this, uh, these proposed parties are qualified.
And, um, that's, that, that, that qualification has to be certified by an office, right? And, and in this case, according to the law, it says that it's the Land Management Bureau. Question, Mr. Speaker, is, based on the committee report, it's first one to identify presenting a division. The question is, is the division under the Land Management Bureau?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
And in due time, Mr. Speaker, I would propose for amendment in order to comply with the law, because according to the law, it says that it should be certified by the Land Management Bureau, and it's not the division, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Um, my next question is for speaker is related already to finance, Mr. Speaker. Though I am member of Committee on Finance, but I need to, I, I wasn't part of the discussion in the committee of finance. Um, the assurance, Mr. Speaker, of getting an NTA, uh, uh, and, um, how do we project that this NT will be forthcoming, no? How soon or how long are we going to wait? Because it has implication on the budget of the parliament, of the Bangsa Moro government.
Who can answer? The floor leader, the minister? One minute suspension.
Please answer. Uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, with regards to municipalities that will comply the local government code of the Philippines, although what we are following is the MMA, the then enactment of the, uh, the enactment of the then ARMM, with regards to those that complied with the local government code or Act of nineteen ninety-one, the entitlement of the NTA uh, is effective January twenty twenty-four, uh, Mr. Speaker. Provided that the plebiscite, uh, shall be conducted this year and that, uh, there will be appointments of the officials in these municipalities, Mr. Speaker. So, uh, it may still be included, uh, or they may still be entitled to the national tax allotment, Mr. Speaker, provided the certain requirements, including the appointment of these officials and the plebiscite, which will ratify the, uh, enactment, Mr. Speaker, uh, that this be conducted, uh, this year, Mr. Speaker.
So, in other words, Mr. Speaker, once we pass these, um, eight bills, Mr. Speaker, the only problem that we are going to shoulder in terms of budget is just for this year. Am I right, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, based on committee, uh, CFDM committee, we are also to shoulder the conduct of the plebiscite. And in the event that the corporate existence of these municipalities will come into effect, we have to shoulder the appropriate NTA for this year, uh, Mr. Speaker. And that beginning twenty twenty-four, uh, Mr. Speaker, they may be entitled to the national tax allotment from the Department of Budget and Management, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Um, Mr. Speaker, do we have an assurance coming from the uh, BLGF with regards to the provision or DBM with regards to the provision of the NT, NTA?
Uh, based on the, uh, committee hearing, Mr., if uh, the corporate existence will come into effect, Mr. Speaker, then the entitlement of the NTA will follow, Mr. Speaker. We also had initial meeting with the BLGF and, uh, DBM, Mr. Speaker, and uh, there was a statement to that effect, Mr. Speaker, as long as certain requirements are complied with, Mr. Uh, Speaker.
That, that's good to hear, Mr. Speaker, because our only burden will be for this year, uh, and that covers the conduct of the plebiscite and the, uh, uh, NTA for, for this year. Um, may I know, Mr. Speaker, um, how much are, are we talking about in terms of, um, translating it into figures for the eight municipalities, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, in the commission of the national tax allotment, we have to consider the population, the area, among others, Mr. Speaker. Uh, the Department of Budget and Management cannot compute yet, uh, did not give yet to us the, the estimate for, Mr. Speaker, because computation will include all other municipalities in the Philippines, Mr. Speaker. The share, uh, of the NTA of these municipalities will be taken from the overall share of all the municipalities, uh, Mr. Speaker. So, in short, uh, they have not gi- uh, given yet the data, Mr. Speaker. They can only give the data once this comes into effect, uh, Mr. Speaker. But definitely, the, the NTA is variable, Mr. Speaker, and will affect the NTA of all municipalities in the in the Philippines, uh, Mr. Speaker, because it will taken from a certain, uh, share in the resources of the national government, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, that is true for twenty twenty-four, Mr. Speaker. What I'm, is, uh, is how much does it cost for the Bangsa Moro government to cover the plebiscite and the initial NTA for twenty twenty-three?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, with regards to the cost of conducting the plebiscite, Mr. Speaker, I think, uh, is the Comelec which is, uh, in a best position to respond to the, uh, to this. But initially, uh, we have to request for, for this from the Comelec, and only then can we identify how much can we, uh, allocate or can we spend on the conduct of the plebiscite. As regards the possible NTA, Mr. Speaker, that may be shouldered by the, uh, by the Bangsa Moro government, we have to consider the average NTA of a particular municipality or of a certain class, Mr. Speaker, and we can use that figure in providing for this year the possible NTA of these municipalities, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, according to the committee report of the finance, it says here that, um, the plebiscite and the funding, initial funding entitlement for the NTA uh, will be, um, covered by the Bangsa Moro government. But this, this is subject to availability of funds, Mr. Speaker. But we are fully, uh, uh, actually, um, making a law right now, that impact we can already say that this amount should be appropriated for these purposes, rather than putting it here that this is subject to availability of funds, but we want the conduct of the, uh, plebiscite as early as we can. So, uh, I guess, uh, Mr. Speaker, in due time, I have a proposal, uh, a proposed amendment, that this is be, this will be subject to the usual accounting and auditing rules and not subject to availability of funds, because uh, we are already, it's, this is already the parliament saying we should appropriate this one for the conduct of plebiscite in order to ensure that the plebiscite will be done.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the idea here was, uh, isasabay sana doon yung plebiscite in the, in the barangay election, and, um, there will be less spend on this. However, if hindi magprosper yung ganong idea, then there will be a separate plebiscite, and that may be costly on the part of the Bangsa Moro government, Mr. Speaker. That's why this was reflected, because, uh, right now, we have not yet decided on the manner or on the date of the conduct of the plebiscite, Mr. Speaker. But we, uh, we may agree on the, uh, on the need to specify this particular matter, uh, Mr. Speaker.
So, in other words, we are still eyeing, Mr. Speaker, with the Comelec National, if we cannot synchronize it with the barangay election, we are still eyeing the National Comelec to fund this and not the Bangsa Moro government. And that's the rationale of putting subject to availability of funds. Am I right, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, regardless kung sasabay ho sa barangay election or ihihwalay, uh, the Bangsa Moro government will shoulder conduct of the plebiscite. With regards nun sa barangay election, then there will be a counterpart from the barang- uh, Bangsa Moro government, uh, Mr. Speaker.
And in that case, Mr. Speaker, if we are certain, why put it here that subject to availability of funds when we are in fact putting some resources to it?
Mr. Speaker, we may agree on this particular, uh, subject matter, Mr. Speaker. If there is a need to enhance this to particularly determine the requirement, Mr. Speaker, then we may be open, uh, in the period of amendment, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and in due time, I have, uh, as, uh, mentioned earlier, I have three proposed amendments, and that includes the last portion of the interpolation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Magaling talaga si Bayutan. Thank you, uh, Lady Paul Magindanaw, you have just enhanced the level of, uh, discussion in these particular bills. The floor leader? MP Jam Ramos is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Please proceed.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, before I proceed, uh, gusto ko lang pong batien ang ating mga panauhin mula sa special geographic area. Maraming salamat po sa inyong pagdalo. Um, meron lang po akong ilang katanungan, uh, para po mas babigyan po tayo ng malinaw na kontesto bakit po natin agara na kailangan na maipasa ang, uh, ang mga, ang pag- create ng municipalities sa SGA. Uh, kumamarapatin po ng ating butihing proponent, ano po ba ang aking mga katanungan?
The sponsor will, if the sponsor will yield?
Very much willing, your honor.
Maraming salamat. Uh, sinortify po ng ating butihing Chief Minister as urgent, no? Ang, uh, ang bills na ito, uh, maari niyo po ba kaming, uh, bigyan ng, uh, ng inyong, uh, idea kung bakit kinakailangan na na maipasa natin itong, uh, bills na ito? Ano po ba yung, uh, uh, namimiss na opportunities ng ating mga kababayan sa SGA? Na dahil hindi pa sila na, nakacreate into municipalities ay kung meron ba silang mga serbisyo, may mga serbisyo ba na, uh, naantala o hindi nila nae-enjoy sa kasalukuyan?
Mr. Speaker, our, uh, companion, uh, MP Kili Antao will answer the gentlewoman.
The expert on this subject matter, MP Kili Antao.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Ano raw ang mga, meron bang naagrabiado? Kung hindi, bakit, uh, kailangan na itong ipasa itong bill na to? Yun yata ang tanong.
Mr. Speaker, huwag mo akong tanungin sa agrabiado. Dahil talagang agrabiadong agrabiado na.
Have they been deprived of these services?
Alam mo niyo, Mr. Speaker. Ang barangay, sixty-three barangay ay kakaiba. Hindi katulad ng Cotabato City, nang mapanalo natin ang plebiscito sa Cotabato City, ay ang buong local government ang nakuha. Dito sa North Cotabato barangay lang, para kaming mga bata na sumama sa kanyang lolo, na naiwan ang kanyang mga magulang. Ang problema namin sa kalagitnaan ng daanan.
Ba't ka na naggalog, sir?
Yes, sir.
Akala ko hindi ka masyado maano sa tagalog. Okay, proceed.
Thank you. So, ngayon, para kaming sa kalagitnaan ng daanan na naiwan ng kanyang magulang, sumama sa kanyang lolo, at wala nang masisilungan. Ngayon, nagpapasalamat kami, sa panahon na ito, na kahit papano ay mayroon na nabuo, na kahit kamali man lang, ay magkaroon na tayo ng sariling bahay. Mr. Speaker, as to the urgency, as to the necessity, kailangan na kailangan namin dahil November twenty twenty nineteen pa kami, na turnover dito sa balm. Na isipin mo yan, kung hindi nila naawa ang papano na ang budget ng mga barangay, kung sino, sino ang mag-review sa kanila, na wala kaming sanggulang bayan na magreview, magreview sa kanila budget. So, Mr. Speaker, sa ating butihing, ang iniling, ang inyong suporta na itong bill na ito ay masuportada makapasa na sa lalong madaling panahon.
Maraming salamat. Gusto ko po ang ipahayag ang aking buong suporta po para sa agarang pagpasanang business day. In fact, uh, sa kalaman po uli ng lahat, ako po ay pinanganak sa Pikit.
Maraming salamat, sister.
Ang uso ko po ay para Ang uso ko po ay para po sa SGA. Sa katunayan po, uh, meron po akong project, uh, kauna-unahang TDIF na multipurpose building na naitayo po sa SGA, ay ang aking proyekto under TDIF po. At kung, in fact, kayo po ang aking guest, and then turnover na yon, hindi po ba?
Kaya ko po, Mr. Speaker, hiniling ang suporta ng aking sister, dahil anat na 63 barangay itong nagtatangong, Mr. Speaker.
Maraming salamat. Uh, ang aking pangalawang katanungan ay, um, ano po ba? Katanungan po.
Panghuli?
Uh, pangalawa po. Uh, apat po ang aking katanungan. Ang aking pangalawang katanungan po ay, ano po ba ang nakikita niyong significance na kailangan na maipasa ang uh, creation of municipalities ba- ang, bago po natin maipasa 'yung Local Governance Code?
Alam ko ninyo, 2020 pa gusto na namin sana maipasa na ito. Dahil as far as the qualification of the six municipalities concerned, alam na alam namin na qualified na siya sa 7160. At uh, gusto rin natin maipasa kaga dahil ang dalawa municipality, the proposed municipality of Kaabakan and the Atop Pahamudin, ay kapag makapasa ang ating Local Government Code, ay hindi na sila maka- ma-qualified. But it is uh, itong uh, opportunity na ito, ito lang ang pagkakataon na mapasa sila kapag ipasa natin before the approval of the Local Governance.
Maraming salamat po. Uh, ang aking pangatlong katanungan, ano po ba ang mangyayari sa mga structure at facilities na nasa territorial jurisdiction na mga itatatag na munisipyo? Ang mga ito po ba ay maililipat sa mga bagong tatag na munisipyo?
Inshallah, inshallah, malipat na, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, um, gusto ko, gusto ko po sana maging klaro po ito sa, kung hindi po ito claro, dahil mahalaga po na mak- ma- makita natin, no? Paano ang treatment at management natin dito dahil gusto natin tuloy-tuloy 'yung uh, pag-eenjoy ng serbisyo ng ating mga konstituwensya, public infrastructure at facility. At dahil dito, uh, Mr. Speaker, meron po akong uh, proposed amendment at a later time, Mr. Speaker.
So, maraming salamat sa katanungan na ating sisters sa uh, in proper time. Pwede mo idagtag yon para po sa clarity ng bill.
Um, ang huli katanungan ko po, pag ito po ay naipasa natin, ano na po ang mga susunod na mga hakbangin natin?
Ano yon, anong tanong?
Mr. Speaker, kapag mapasana doon ito, ay ano ang susunod na hakbang natin? So, nakita natin kanina na after, after ma-approve ito, magkakaroon po tayo ng plebiscite. Then after the plebiscite, nandyan din sa batas, the Chief Minister will appoint the local office, the mayor, the vice mayor, and the municipal councilor, uh, Mr. Speaker, and others.
Maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker. Yun lang po, muli ang aking suporta po para sa agarang pagpasanang bill na ito. Maraming salamat po.
Maraming salamat po.
Mukhang naggo-observe tayo ng linggo ng wika, dahil puro tagalog tayo. Eh, talagang wilinggo na wika ngayon eh.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Magaling pala ito si Kili na nagalog. Majority leader, the floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, the next, next set of interpolators are MP Don Loong and MP Rasul Mitmog.
MP Don Loong and?
MP Rasul Mitmog.
One at a time, Rasul Mitmog. Please proceed, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Huwag masyado mahaba.
Yes, uh, this is just a brief, Mr. Speaker, um, just to clarify some points.
Please proceed, if the sponsor will yield.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, um, uh, I'd just like to be clarified uh, on um, the report of the Committee on Finance and the Committee on Local Government, because under section six of Bill 129, and this applies to the other bills, uh, under Committee Report uh, number 24, it states that the Comelec will fund the plebise- plebiscite. And under support of the Committee on Finance, uh, Committee Report 32, it states that the plebiscite will be funded by the Bangsa Moro government, subject to availability of funds. May we, right, uh, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I understand that the uh, Committee Report from the Committee on Local Government Code came first, and this eventually was uh, addressed in the Committee on Finance, Mr. Speaker. So I think the idea of the proponent is that this be funded by the uh, by the Bangsa Moro government, uh, Mr. Speaker. So if there is an amendment, Mr. Speaker, then the proponents are open uh, for that, uh, Mr. Speaker.
So um, to restate it, uh, the proposal of the Local Government Code stating that it will be funded by the Bangsa Moro, or rather by the Committee on Finance, which one will prevail? It is the proposal of the Committee on Finance that it's funded by the Bangsa Moro government?
Uh, the provision, Mr. Speaker, being financial in nature and that it was, since it was reflected, uh, referred to the Committee on Finance, Mr. Speaker, the Committee on Finance Report uh, will prevail, Mr. Speaker. That is the Bangsa Moro government funding the conduct of the plebiscite, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So um, that being the case, Mr. Speaker, um, I would just like to be clarified if there are mechanisms or dialogues with the Comelec already as to our government will be um, transferring uh, funding for the plebiscite, as the target is uh, two months from now, inshallah, although we stated that it's uh, subject to availability of funds.
The, the floor leader may answer, uh, if there has been, I think there has been Comelec, if I may advance the, the answer.
Um, Mr. Speaker, there, there was a prior consultation conducted with the Comelec.
And the question was?
Um, that the mechanisms uh, on which that the Bangsa Moro government.
Will download.
Because it will be easy if it's Comelec funded, but since it's Bangsa Moro government-funded plebiscite, uh, has there already been uh, technical discussion on this matter to ensure that there are no challenges along the way in the implementation?
Um, Mr. Speaker, there is no uh, discussion as to details uh, about the uh, conduct of the election, but there's, there is only prior consultation. But as soon as we are able to uh, pass this law, we will begin the necessary uh, consultations and joint planning with the Comelec to proceed with the conduct of the plebiscite. But uh, uh, we already have prior advisory that as far as plebiscite for uh, local government units or creation of new, new municipalities is concerned, it will be borne by the autonomous region or the province. But in our case, it will be the BARM, because it will be the parliament that created this particular municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There's a sentence there that states uh, subject to availability of funds. Uh, can we be clarified if there's already available funds so that the, the people of the SGA can already uh, look forward to it? If we pass this law?
I think, Mr. Speaker, the reason why the subject availability of fund was reflected in the subcommittee, uh, the committee report, Mr. Speaker, is that because there were two options before, uh, thought of. First is that uh, it will go simultaneously with the conduct of the barangay election, which be less costly on the part of the Bangsa Moro government, since it will only shoulder a part uh, of that con- The second option is to have it conducted separate from the uh, barangay election, Mr. Speaker. So that is why this phrase was reflected in the committee report, Mr. Speaker. But again, the proponents are open to having this uh, enhanced, uh, Mr. Speaker, in the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker. But with regards to the plan, yes, Mr. Speaker, the Bangsa Moro government committed uh, in providing the plan for the conduct of the plebiscite for these uh, eight municipalities, uh, Mr. Speaker.
So considering the present situation then, uh, if I understood the amendment right, we can already remove later on in the period of amendments, the subject to availability of funds, because as lawmakers, we already intend to fund the plebiscite uh, this year. Uh, my next, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. My next question is just uh, to uh, to clarify again, uh, I express my support to all this. Um, my, my next question is to clarify as regards the financial assistance, because there seems to be a, uh, it's not a clash, but uh, a divergence on the report of the local government. It already states 2.5 million per month per municipality, but for the Committee on Finance, it states subject to availability of funds. So can we decide which of this we will be supporting?
Mr. Speaker, the issue being financial in nature and that it having been referred to the Committee on Finance, Mr. Speaker, I think the Committee Report of the Committee on Finance prevails, Mr. Speaker, of this uh, particular item, uh, Mr. Speaker.
So uh, we who are supporting these bills, if I would understand that, will be more of uh, later in the Committee on Amendments, as we converge this, uh, be moving towards approving the word subject to availability of funds. Does that mean, Mr. Speaker, that the subsidy might be different per municipality based on population, land area, and other factors?
Uh, maybe, uh, Mr. Speaker, we have to consider in the provision of the financial assistance, the population, the land area, among others, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um, in amended uh, uh, bill, we already placed the uh, uh, the line, the bearing, the distance, and description. The paper provided to us actually does not yet show that, but on the email, it is provided. And uh, just as the case with MP Bay Intan, who was able to uh, um, to raise the point that three barangays were missed in one bill, uh, I'm concerned that if we place a, the line, bearing, distance, and description, that we must make sure that this line, bearing, distance, and description must be, uh, there must be full completed staff work, because once we approve it as a law, um, there are disparities or errors later on, um, how could we be able to rectify? If ever there were uh, typographical errors in this uh, statement of line, bearing, distance, and dis- What will prevail, the end of the law or uh, yes?
Um, Mr. Speaker, in the, in the committee report, already remove the technical description, considering that what only required under the Local Government Court Code is the certification as to the land area. So there is really no stringent requirement to already determine the technical description uh, of the uh, new, proposed new municipality. So it's not there anymore in the committee report, but uh, but just to also uh, uh, appraise the, the parliament that uh, the uh, the, the, there was already a, a survey conducted by a qualified uh, judetic engineer and who, who already uh, who was already able to submit the report, and this report was already conformed uh, and uh, and certified by the uh, the uh, the DN of region two. But uh, considering that uh, we only requir, what is only required is the certification as to land area, we decided that we, we will not longer include that in the main uh, bill itself. So it is be a source or annex to the report, so that we will not be tied up precisely the situation that you are raising there, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, because uh, as we know, uh, there are existing boundary disputes in some ways. So we don't want our, our future municipalities to have challenges. So uh, uh, just last uh, uh, comment, um, Mr. Speaker, uh, this will be um, a unique case where we will have barangays in one municipality with some interior barangays not belonging to that municipality. Um, do we not need some kind of intermunicipality provision in this law to address this kind of uh, geographic uh, situation by our municipalities?
Well, uh, I think ma- I, I think uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, there is no more need for that, because uh, the 63 barangays already conducted uh, prior uh, wherein their own uh, locations were already predetermined. So as of now, uh, what we were only concerned at this point is the uh, men as to total land is actually fully complied with. And there are also other cases in some, like for example, in Metro Manila, wherein there are also barangays that are not necessarily contiguous. So this is also uh, not actually unique, because uh, there are areas in other cities wherein barangays are not necessarily contiguous.
Thank you very much. I'm fully satisfied with the answer, Mr. Speaker, and I commend the Committees on Local Government and Finance for their hard work and uh, uh, and the great work on this uh, bills, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, MP Don, uh, from the chair, just clarification, uh, you, you said that you have withdrawn the technical description and only indicated the land area, uh. Yun ba 'yung sinasabi mo, Marian, MP Marian?
Uh, yes, Mr. Speaker, uh.
But we are ready with the technical description also for reference.
Yes, we have, we have.
It might, it might cause conflict among inter barangays pag hindi claro 'yung meets and bounds.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we already, uh, can, there was already a, a survey conducted by a-
You did not include that survey, however, you can just include the land area. Thank you very much.
Access, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Next. Lana ba? MP Rasmitmog, the gentleman.
Sir Chair, magandang, magandang hapon po. Uh, I would like to ask two clarificatory questions, Sir Chair.
Maigsilang siguro, two clarificatory.
Uh, the, the first question, Sir Chair, is kung, kasi uh, magkakaroon po ng plebiscito para maging formal na 'yung pagcreate ng munisipyo, yun talaga 'yung operative act. Pero prior po ng uh, plebiscito, kung napass po natin 'yung BLGC, para lang claro sa ating lahat, will the BLGC have some effect on the, on the laws that we will pass?
Ano yon?
Kung makapas po 'yung BLGC prior the plebiscite, will it have sa any effect dun sa ating batas?
That's also lingering in my mind. Yung BLG's proposed Bangsa, Bangsa.
Proposed Bangsa Moro Local Governance Code.
Ang tanong, kung may impact, consequence daw ba yon, kung mauna or mahuli?
Mr. Speaker, at the time of the enactment, our uh, legal regime, uh, and so far as local government uh, units are concerned, is a Mindanao, mostly Mindanao autonomy act, to number 25. So that is the basis for our, for the creation of our new municipalities. If in uh, subsequently, we will be able to enact BLGC, the, the new Bangsa Moro Local Government Code, that will have no bearing on what we have already passed here, because it will be applied prospectively.
Maraming salamat po, Mr. Chair, at least claro po yon. Yung second question ko po, Mr. Chair, uh, anim po dun sa ating mga munisipyo ay created uh, following MMA 25 and even passing the 7160 standard. Uh, subalit dalawa po ata dito ay hindi umabot sa 7160 standard. So ang pagkaintindi ko po niyan, under sa MMA 25, similarly situated sa, sa ARM municipalities, uh, hindi po siya napupunduhan ng DBM. Uh, yung anim po, may chance po yun mapunduhan in the future. Unfortunately, baka 'yung dalawa, uh, hindi, hindi mapupunduhan. Uh, ibig ba sabihin, uh, bibigyan po natin sila ng era based dun sa ating Bangsa Moro black ground?
One, sir, may answer?
Uh, uh, before our minister will respond to that question in terms of finance, uh, I just want to also uh, inform our parliament that uh, the uh, the uh, shortfall in term for the two municipalities, Pahamudin and the old Kaabakan, is actually only on population. Because the, uh, the legal basis for our population, in determining uh, the number of population is the last census, which was actually in 2020.
ah the number of population is the last census, which was actually in twenty twenty. So for example, Pahamudin has a population of ah as of twenty twenty of eighteen thousand. But ah if we will already, if we will conduct the ah, ah ple- ah cons- ah the census now, they're actually qualified. So ah, so it will just be a matter of time. If we wait for the next ah, ah census in twenty twenty five, we are very ah assured that they will ah qualify, fully qualify and will be fully entitled to the national tax allocation.
Um Mr. Chair, ang nais lang po natin is an assurance kasi ayaw po natin mangyari 'yung mga ah non-erab municipalities ulit. Ang gusto lang po natin assurance is fully funded by DBM. Pero kung hindi naman sila funded by the DBM, ah at ah continued ah hindi nila mang ah finance ang makaa ng dalawang barangay, kundi we can also assure them, ah they can be moro ah black fund or the bangsamoro fund. Ah yun lang po 'yung ah nais natin kasi ang pagkaintindi ko po, ah 'yung mga hindi nakapay sa seventy sixty requirement ah at the outset of creation, ah tuloy-tuloy na po 'yun ma- amount, ah 'yung ano, 'yung qualification, they will not be funded by the national agency. Ah yun po 'yun 'yung policy sa ARM. Sana po ah baka the assurance na hindi 'yun 'yung mangyayari ngayon sa, sa atin situation natin.
Or may answer?
Ah Mr. Speaker, the SGA being formally part already of the bangsamoro government is entitled to all ah, to assistance among others, Mr. Speaker. These bills as the priority legislation of the government of the day for this year, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker also aim to provide the appropriate funding to these municipalities, Mr. Speaker. For the two municipalities that may not comply with the Local Government Act of nineteen ninety one on the population, Mr. Speaker, the bangsamoro government or the government of the day commits ah in the provision of the assistance to these ah two municipalities, Mr. Speaker. So yes, Mr. Speaker, the government is ah committing to the provision of the assistance to these ah two municipalities, ah Mr. Speaker.
From the chair, if I may intervene, 'yung tanong po ni Ras is, I hope ah makabigay ba tayo na assurance that this will not happen to the two municipalities? Kasi ang, ang principle yata ngayon is pag upon its creation, hindi nagme-meet ng qualifications sa seventy one sixty, kahit magmeet na sila later on, they will still not be provided era. Ganun ba 'yung Ras?
Yes, Sir Chair, that happened in ARMM. I think the solution for that is to recreate them, ah another law to create them again.
The, the case of the Basilan and Magindanao areas ah municipalities, mga non-funded, non-erab municipalities, upon the enactment of Republic Act eleven zero five four, na regularize na sila so meron na silang era and at that time na qualify na rin sila so yun lang 'yung sinasabi mo, 'yung two municipalities, kung from each creation hindi nag-meet, magiging pasanin na nila 'yun, wala na silang era. Ganun ba 'yun?
Yes, Sir Chair, yun, yun po 'yung nangyari until and unless na ma-create sila po ulit. Naging special situation po 'yung non-erab ah municipalities ng ARM, BCOOL.
Mr. Speaker, I was told that ah there are instances ah municipalities were created by then RLA ah which failed to meet the requirements of seventy one sixty. However, eventually they complied and that they were entitled eventually to that ah era, Mr. Speaker.
In addition to that, it is already included in the Republic Act eleven zero five four those non-era will now be treated as a regular, regularly created municipalities. Kaya wala nang naiwan.
Ah yes, Mr. Speaker. In addition to that, Mr. Speaker, if this arises then ah then intergovernmental relations, but which can ah discuss their ah issue, ah Mr. Speaker. So that is ah an assurance, or that may be an assurance, Mr. Speaker, in the event that this arises, ah Mr. Speaker.
Are you satisfied, Ras?
Satisfied, Sir.
Thank you. Wala na ba? Wala na, uyan na.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, the floor leader.
Ah no, because we are still with committee report number twenty four and thirty two, Mr. Speaker. If there are no other interpolations on this committee report on bill, reports on bill, BTA bill number nine, I terminate with the period, period, terminate the period of interpolation and debate, Mr.
Close the period of interpolation and debate, BTA bill number- that-
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Done. Is there objection? Chair hears, hear by approval.
Mr. Speaker, may we the MP Jet Lim, who has his virtual hand raised?
Ah?
Jet Lim.
Ah si Jet Lim, I'm sorry. Hindi ko nakita 'yung aking brother. Pwede bang pagbigyan muna natin dahil nakaligtahan kong tumingin dito sa, sa screen ko? Si Jet Lim and then maybe MP Jet Lim muna, floor leader. MP, recognized, please proceed.
Ah, this is Miller Rahman Ryan. Salam alaykum. Meron ka tulad. Talaga barakatoo. Oh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Bakasan mo, bro? Hindi marinig. Odiyo mo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Majority Floor Leader, for the recognition. Ah first of all, I would like to, with the permission of Speaker, add a little digression. Ah I would like to congratulate the IBP president in twenty twenty five, Attorney Alan. Ah-
Indeep, indihan po 'yung odiyo mo. Maximum na ba 'yan palitan mo? Luma.
How about that, Mr. Speaker?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, ah Mr. Speaker, this is just a, a question of law. Ah if the proponent will ah may I know if in the previous ah in the ARM, in the, under MMA, who appoints the mayor and the other elec- ah officers of the municipality after its creation and a eventual ah win in a plebiscite?
Who appoints daw the, the mayors and down the line for these newly created municipalities? Who can answer? Who can answer that? Who appoints daw the officials? Under the law, I think it's the chief minister.
Under MMA po, ah because we are creating a municipality under MMA. So just a question of law po, or clarity po?
Speaker?
Yes? Floor leader?
And what the specific law se- provides? There is no ah, there is no ah speci- ah hard and fast rule there, but ah it has to be defined in the proposed law itself. No. Yeah.
Speaker, may I just repeat the answer?
One minute pension.
Session resume. Ah tahimik na tayo. Tahimik na tayo.
Mr. Speaker, according to MP Attorney Isjak Mastura, who has been a long time ah um personality in the ARMM before, there were twelve municipalities created under MMA Act 25.
In Magindanao only?
All over ARMM.
Bati basilan?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So ilan? Twelve?
Twelve.
Huling hirit 'yan na. Twelve?
Unless MP Jetlin can add more. No, no. That is our accounting here.
Bata pa si Jetlin. Di pa pinapanganak 'yan nung armed days.
I'm not, I'm raising this question.
Twelve daw. Twelve.
Yeah, I'm raising this question not to...
Twelve daw.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm raising this question not to oppose the law, but actually to provide guidance in the future because as we as our population is growing, in the future we might be creating ah LGUs municipalities so for proper guidance. Para hindi tayo malito in the future. That's why I'm asking. Because ah one law, for instance, under MMA, I saw one created Sultan ah Sultan, Sultan Municipality of Sultan Dumalondong, the create, the creating law did not mention the ah the who appoints the municipal mayor, perhaps because there there was a local government or MMA Act ah providing for that ah purpose in case of ah newly created municipality and which thereafter won in a pleviceet. So under our new setup, ah the BTA.
Pitahan mo na emoji.
Because we are under a new setup.
Kao. Wala. Wala. 'Yan. Thank you.
Yeah. Because under our new setup, I would just like, no, for proper guidance for everyone sa mga LGUs and our constituents, ah ano magiging basis natin sa ah ah sa new setup natin na sa parliament na iba na ngayon ah, idina tayo sa regional government, iba na ngayon. So where will we be getting the ah basis, no, for?
Putul-putul ang dating mo. Please restate your please restate your posi- your statements. Wala eh. Wala kaming narinig eh.
Anyway, Mr. Speaker, I'm not, again, I'm not...
'Yan. Oh, nawalan naman.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, I repeat again.
Time out. Tara.
For the last time, for the last time, I'm not opposing the law. I'm just ah um ah asking this for proper guidance because ah as we are, we have a growing population, I am sure in the near future we're gonna make a new LGU, we're gonna make a municipality or barangay, et cetera, et cetera. So we will be asking who, who, who has the power to appoint the new ah mayor for that matter or barangay official for that matter? This is more actually more on educational ah purposes, no, for our guidance. But no objection whatsoever ah to the creation of this municipality. And for the record, I fully ah support the our our fellow Bangsamoro in the SGAs. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Pinalakpakan ka na, MP Jet. Kasi ang dami mong sinabi, walang narinig. Ang narinig, I'm fully support the bill. Kaya pinalakpakan ka na. And thank you raw, sabi ng sponsor. Thank you guys, bro. Bro leader.
Mr. Speaker, I know.
Mahirap itong kuwan na'to. Pakatidin natin naririnig. Nagtitiis tayo.
I move to terminate the period of interpolation and debate, Mr. Speaker.
On bill number?
Bill on the committee report numbers twenty-four and thirty-two related to bill number one two-nine.
On BTA bill one?
Two-nine.
Two-nine. Ah there is now a motion to terminate, to terminate the period of interpolation and debate on BTA bill number one two-nine. Yuli seconded. Is there any objection? Here, here's none. Same issue by approved. Meron nagre- may intan kanina, I saw her.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I move to open the period of amendments.
Ah there is a motion to open the period of amendments. Yuli seconded. Is there any objection? Wala, wala. Pag tahimik, eh sasabihin ko walang objection. Pag nagsalita kayo, objection 'yan. There's no objection. The motion is approved.
We recognize MP Don Loong.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Gentleman who is actively participating.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Um ah in line with ah my interpolation earlier ah inquiry regarding the meets and bounds, I would just like maybe to give the opportunity to the sponsor to ah to consider if they would like to return the meets and bounds. The, I checked um the laws creating Cebuto, creating the municipalities in Basilan, as well as creating the municipalities in Magindanao. And section two of all those MMA acts actually provides for the meets and bounds, which ah maybe helps identify the municipality. Number two prevents conflict. Posal to amend is to return the meets and bounds. However, to argue in favor of the government of the day as well, I did check the national laws creating municipalities and LGUs. And they did not also provide for the specifics. So just to give the opportunity for the sponsor to finally decide as we go on to finally approve this bill, I would like to move ah for the return of the technical description as to meets and bounds to already make it clear which areas of the municipalities are included to prevent conflict later on because when we approve an area that is not clear, it has um unintended consequences of ah conflict on the ground. But anyway, which way, I support, Mr. Speaker.
Do you sponsor? May I answer?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, thank you for the support. And since ah the good gentleman already reco- ah declared that there it is not really required under the law to provide ah um ah meets and bounds of the proposed territories in the new municipalities. So the short answer is we do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
But ah there is an assurance that it will form part of the annex, not in the law anymore, but in the annex, di ba?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
In the annex, it will be there, the meets and bounds. That's very important to avoid future boundary conflicts.
Yes. Thank you. With that, I'm very satisfied and I'm fully supportive of the law, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. MP Don Loong.
Next to ah register amendments, Mr. Speaker, is MP Bayinta Nampatuhan.
MP Bayinta Nampatuhan is recognized. Si Kyle Munna raw.
Yes. Ah may we recognize MP Hadji Abdullah, Mr. Speaker?
MP Kyle Hadji Abdullah?
Ah yes, Mr. Speaker. Ah with regard with the appointment of the officials to the ah newly created municipalities, I would like just to suggest ah na 'yung the new officers of these municipalities shall be appointed by the president upon the recommendation of the chief minister if the sponsor will agree.
Um, ah Mr. Speaker, since we are an autonomous government and ah we are led by our chief minister, so ah the ah it is just proper that all our ah officials under the new municipalities will be ah appointed by the chief minister. We do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, MP Kyle. Narinig ko rin boss ni MP Kyle.
MP Ramos is, MP Ramos.
Jam Ramos is recognized. The lady from additional area ni Apikit.
Ah, yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you very much. Ah is lang po ang aking proposed amendment. Ah ito ay sa section seven. I'd like to ah include in the section eight, which says section eight, transfer of LGU-owned public infrastructure and facilities. All LGU-owned public infrastructure and facilities for public use and are essential for local governance existing there, existing um within the territory of new municipalities at the time of the approval of this act are hereby transferred without cost of compensation to and shall be administered by the newly established municipality. An inventory of this infrastructure and facilities shall be conducted for this purpose. That is my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker. Ah this is just to ensure of a smooth transition, Mr. Speaker.
Are we ready to answer?
Um, Mr. Speaker, we accept with very minor ah changes ah under the third line um of new municipality, of the new municipality. So it should be singular since this applies to one municipality only and that of the new municipality. We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you. Okay.
Accepted. Amendments accepted. With further amendments, amendments to the amendments.
Finally, Mr. Speaker, MP Nampatuhan.
MP Bayinta Nampatuhan. Ang dami papa-lo. Kompleto ka talaga. Sige, proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Um at the outset, um, Mr. Speaker, ah ako'y munang naginterpetate but I haven't ah mentioned that I'm supporting the the eight bills impact. Kung hindi ko sinusuportahan nito, baka mas marami 'yung aking tanong, no? But ah I focus only on the things that ah I think that will improve the the bills. Ah, Mr. Speaker, with regards to committee report number twenty-four, ah integrated or combined with the committee report number thirty-two, ah which is BTA bill one two-nine. One two-nine. Saan ka na? Pwedeng magsimula na tayo sa one, one three-five? One three-one, one three-one. One three-one and one three-five because one two-nine muna, one two-nine? Sige, one two-nine. Masamang copy ako ng one two-nine. Okay. Meron na. Open na. So one two-nine. Okay, um as agreed earlier, to include ah ah the one two-nine is already okay. But with regards to, with rega- okay na 'yung 'yung barangays. There are twelve barangays and all the barangays are reflected correctly. But with regards to with regards to page number four, I think page number four of the committee report, on land area. On land area. Um, I propose that we insert the word under, under the Land Management Bureau, open close parentheses, LMB. Under the Land Management Bureau, open close LMB. Off the D and R. Okay lang 'yan. Iinsert lang na.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, in behalf of the committee on local government, we accept.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The next proposed amendment is on the Committee on Finance ah Report. Which is the ah section one and ah section, ah section six and section eight. Ah, Mr. Speaker, um, I propose that instead of the word subject to the availability of funds, we replace it to subject to usual accounting and auditing rules and regulations. We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Accepted.
Ah that's all for BTA bill number one two-nine. Let's move to BTA bill one two, ah one three-three, which is the combination.
Iba, what, excuse me, one two-nine pa lang tayo, open sa period of amendments. Wala pa 'yung iba. You, we will welcome you in the next ah bills. Wala, wala na ba? Wala na yata. So next bill, ah kano tayo, closely terminate the period of amendments. Hello?
I, I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion to terminate the period of amendments on BTA bill. There's a motion to terminate the period of amendments on BTA bill one two nine. Julie seconded, is there any objection? Here, here's none, same is hereby approved. Next.
Mister Speaker.
Sorry, dead.
Okay, the next, I move to approve. Ay, bakit ah? I move up to approve committee. Jet Lim, Mister Speaker. Jet Lim is still raising his hand. Jet Lim, this time please.
MP Jet Lim is recognized. I hope you have improved video now, this time.
Yes sir, uh Mister Speaker, thank you. Again, I fully support the passage of this bill, but uh just uh in in support of that, can we just uh since we are following MMA Act twenty-five, creation of municipalities, I think we should put the meets and bounds of the uh constituent barangays con- uh consisting the newly the newly created municipality because it's it's under the MMA Act that it should be properly identified by meets and bounds the territorial jurisdiction of the newly created municipality. Can we can we incorporate it in the body of the law itself and not just by mere annex? Thank you Mister Speaker.
Answer.
Uh Mister Speaker, uh with all due respect to our colleague uh on the Zoom that matter has already been answered and settled earlier.
The answer was uh it will be it will form part of the annex and not in the law itself. The law will just specify the area, land area. Will that be okay with you? Because that was the same issue raised earlier.
Well, uh Mister Speaker, uh I submit to the majority but uh the MMA Act actually provides that it's the law must uh uh state the meets and bounds.
It will be provided in the annex. Do we have time to incorporate that, the meets and bounds in the law itself? Hello? Mahirap 'yung tanong mo. Suspension for one minute. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker, MP Ramos wishes to manifest something.
MP Jam Ramos is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Upon consultation with our good proponents and some MPs, I am withdrawing my proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
The proponent is withdrawing his, her proposal to amend. So, do we delete the entire paragraph? The entire section?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I am withdrawing the proposed amendment of the entire, ah, section, Mr. Speaker.
The entire section? Including the previous?
Oh-
Cause i- i- that's also present in the previous one?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
I, I, ah, I'm only withdrawing from this, ah, ah, proposed amendment on this particular bill, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, how about the other bill?
If the good proponent would accept, ah, removal also of the provision that has been approved already. Gladly, gladly, Mr. Speaker. So, we be con- very consistent, Mr. Speaker. We will glad- we gladly agree to that proposal.
So, pati 'yung previous law, ah, previous bill na hindi pa approve on third.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I am also withdrawing that if the good proponent would accept.
If the majority of the members of the BTA approves, then it's okay. So, there's, seemingly there's no objection to that. Same is, ah, approved. Strike, strike out from the records in section eight. Pati dun sa section, ano section 'yung previous?
A same section, Mr. Speaker.
Section?
That on particular bill.
Section ano rin, 'yung previous?
The same section eight.
Same section? Eight. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The motion to strike from the bill, ah, section eight for both lo- both bills, one two nine and one three zero is approved.
Next, Mr. Speaker, ah, to introduce an amendment is MP Ampatuan.
The MP Ampatuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, um. The same with the BTA bill ah, one two nine, Mr. Speaker. On page-
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't understand why bila dun sa kanila na-
Page three. Page three of the committee report. Ah, to insert the word under the Land Management Bureau, open close parentheses, LMB.
Chair of the committee?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Ah?
We accept.
Accepted.
And on the committee report ah, of the Committee on Finance, ah, Mr. Speaker, um, item one and I'm item two, ah, instead of subject to availability of funds, ah, it will be replaced by subject to usual-
Can we su- we'll sus- suspend session for three minutes? The floor leader may answer the proponents for the amendments?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Accepted. Alam na ba ina-accept kung ano?
Ano ba 'yung ina-
Yes, Mr. Speaker. We accept the pro- the amendment to change subject to availability of funds to subject to usual accounting rules and regulations.
Okay.
Accounting and auditing rules.
Accepted now.
Auditing rules.
Accounting and auditing rules and regulations.
Subject to accounting, auditing rules. Accepted anymore? No more? Thank you.
Mr. Speaker-
Floor leader.
Ah, I now move to terminate the period of amendment.
For bill number one three zero?
Yes.
There's now a period, a motion to terminate the period of in, of amendments for bill one three zero. Is there any second? You will seconded, there any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved. Next.
I move to approve committee report number twenty six and committee report number thirty three on BTA bill number one three zero as consolidated, Mr. Speaker, subject to amendments and subject to style.
There is now a motion to approve, ah, BTA bill number one three zero ba?
Yes.
One three zero subject to style and am- amendments and style. There any second? You will seconded, is there any objection? Chair here stands, we will now proceed to voting by Viva Bote.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I move to, ah, call for, to vote on, ah, committee on-
We will vote on Viva Bote.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
To those who are internal or BTA bill number one three zero with amendments, say ayes. To those who are against the bill one three zero, say nay. Meron nagneero, no? Hindi lang marinig. So, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We now move to committee report number twenty seven and thirty four on bill number one three one. Mr. Speaker.
BTA bill one three one to open the period of interpolation and debate?
Yes, I move to-
For bill one three one. Is there any second?
Second.
There any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved. The BTA bill number one three one is now open for interpolation and debate. Tama? How, amendments?
This dispense with the period of interpolation and debate, Mr. Speaker.
Ah?
Dispense with, wala ng- dispense with it's, dispense.
Dispense with?
The period, ah, interpolation and debate, if we don't-
Ah, there's a motion to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate.
Second.
You will seconded, is there any objection? Chair here stands, the same is hereby approved.
I move to open the period of amendments, Mr. Speaker.
Second.
There's a motion to open the period of in, of amendments for BTA bill number one three one. You will seconded, there any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
Ag- again, we, may we recognize MP Ampatuan, Mr. Speaker?
MP Bay Intan Ampatuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, um. I'd like to request the secretariat to ah, flash on the screen annex one. Annex one of the committee report. Pages number three, I think. 'Yung matrix, matrix, the matrix. The matrix. Annex one po. Annex one.
Iba man 'yung, iba man 'yung sa amin.
One A, yan eh, annex one.
The other annex. One three one, one three one. Um, just for the record, Mr. Speaker, ah, while it is already reflected there, but in the documents that we are holding, yeah, it's not part of, ah, the annex one. So, ah, the barangay dungguan should be part of that. Ah, please of barangays, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, we accept the correction on the annex as, ah, as, ah, amended.
And the next proposal, Mr. S- Mr. Speaker, is on the annex about, ah, the LMB. Which is a page
LMB?
Page four. Ah, to insert the word under the la- ah, Land Management Bureau, ah, open close parentheses, LMB.
This is a continuing amendment, Mr. Speaker, we accept.
And same is true with the continuing amendment on the financial aspect ah, subject to usual accounting and auditing rules and procedures.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. We accept, ah, that as a continuing amendment all throughout the eight bills.
Ah, pwedeng matignan 'yung sa ano? Sa land, ah, number three, land area, dun sa annex. Parang iba 'yung na typan. Sana 'yun? Di. Na 'yun tama 'yung kanina? Balik. Hindi dyan, hindi dyan. Ah, dun sa taas. 'Yung after the word 'yung pangalan ng Sultan Chief Survey Ma- ah, and Mapping Division under ah, Land Management Bureau LMB. Dyan. An- under division, after division, under. Tangalin mo dun sa nilagay mo sa baba. Tapos open close parentheses, LMB. Na-accept na. 'Yung subject to usual-
Ah, we all, we accept the continuing amendment on this ma- this particular matter, Mr. Chair, ah, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I now move to, ah, terminate the period of amendments.
Second.
There's a motion to terminate the period of amendments for BTA bill number one three one. You will seconded, is there any objection?
Mr. Speaker.
There is somebody in the Zoom.
Mr. Speaker, that's MP Jet Lim, MP Lim.
MP Jet Lim is recognized before we rule on the motion to terminate.
Ah, again, I have no objection to the passage of the bill, but, ah, I will like to register my ah, omnibus proposal that instead of using annexes, we just put the meets and bounds in the body of the law itself, not just by ah, attaching it as an annex, no?
The, the, I, I think it was rejected already.
Yeah, yeah, I understand my omnibus, ah, proposal for all the bills, so I will not raise again my virtual and later on, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
The floor leader will please explain to MP Jet Lim omnibus proposal na to include the meets and bounds.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, ah, that has already been dealt with, ah, with the earlier committee reports and previous bills, Mr. Speaker. Um, we would like to respond with an omnibus.
Mr. Speaker, we, we respectfully, ah- Mister Speaker, we respectfully, uh, uh, we respectfully reject the continuing manifestation and proposal of our good, uh, MP from Sulu and Tawi Tawi.
Uh, I submit to the wisdom of the majority. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, MP Jet Lim, uh, Deputy Speaker Omar Semah is recognized.
Mister Speaker, uh, I would like to clarify, what is the proper term that you should be used with this? Uh, supposedly annexes, I believe they are not annexes anymore, but they are, they are to be appended to the bill, they are supposed to be appendices. Itong, you, that these requirements, these documentary requirements are considered appendices of the bill, of the, of this proposed bill, so technically, Mister Speaker, we can consider them as part of the bill already if, if our treatment is that they are appendices or appended, that they are appended to the bill itself.
What is the difference between appendices and?
Yes, that is practically my question.
And annexes.
And they are, they are practically not, they are prac, practically not the same, Mister Speaker.
Annex, annex is supposed to be part of the law. As an annex.
No, Mister Speaker. There are, uh, there are also instances that what is being used is append, uh, 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 appendices and not annexes, Mister Speaker.
What is more appropriate?
We should use the term as append, uh, appendices, Mister Speaker.
Ang appendices, referals yun, di ba, sa mga?
Just like when we, when, just like, uh, when, uh, in the, in the case of the constitution, Mister Speaker, when we create, uh, let's say, a municipality, its creation is appended to the constitution, Mister Speaker. In the, in the same vein as the BOL, wha, when, when, when it was ratified, it was appended to the constitution, Mister Speaker.
The BOL has annexes, di ba? And, ah, sa, sa cab pala may annexes, and that annexes were for, form part of the agreements.
Mister Speaker, um, based on the.
Google.
Thorough research of MP Haji Abdullah, an appendix contains data that cannot be placed in the main document.
Itself, oh.
And has references in the original copy or file.
References lang siya.
An annex is usually a standalone document that offers additional information than contained in the main document. So it can.
Contain.
In, so, an, an annex is a standalone document that offers additional information than that in the main document.
Uh, so.
Can I have one question? Just one question. Are, are these annexes to the report or annexes to the bill when it was filed?
To the bill, Mister.
MP Jet Lim is recognized.
Mister Speaker, my question is, are these, uh, annexes to the consolidated report or to the bill when it wa, when they were originally filed?
To the bill, as originally filed, ay, to the origina, sorry, I, I take that back to the committee report, Mister Speaker. Annexes to the committee reports, Mister Speaker.
Now, if they are annexes to the committee reports, how, how can they be, make, be made part of a law?
At the law.
Report, that's the problem, that's why I'm suggesting it should be included in the law to make it part of the law.
MP Jet Lim has a very good point.
Uh, Mister Speaker, uh, the, the annex is actually, uh, attached to the committee report. In the main bill itself, there is no annex, and the annex in the committee report, uh, simply supports the factual determination of the committee that, uh, the proposed municipality meet all the, uh, legal requirements on territory.
Area.
Uh, area and population, so these were annex in the committee report, but they do not form part of the, the main bill itself.
So i, in, in that case.
This will just support the, the, the legal requirements, the due diligence conducted by the committee that, uh, all of these, uh, proposed municipalities meet the legal requirements.
I think that's a question of, uh, of law, di ba? Uh. One minute suspension.
Speaker. May we request for silence, Mister Speaker.
We cannot proceed with the kind of market, uh, status we have. Public market ba'to? Of ideas. How can we now, uh, hold our peace and listen further? Diaz Omar.
Mister Speaker, um, may we request the proponent to answer the, uh, or to respond to the proposed amendment of MP, of Deputy Speaker Omar Semah.
Uh, Mister Speaker, considering the very, uh, enlightening research and input of MP Abdullah, uh, uh, of MP Kyle, we accept the proposal to include the meets and bounds in our, uh, appendix. As an appendix to the, uh.
As an appendix.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
In the bill itself.
Yes, as an appendix, Mister Speaker.
To include other, yung, yung previous bill, no? So, MP Jet Lim. Can you hear us?
I can hear you clearly, uh, Mister Speaker.
Isasali na raw sa appendix because ang, uh, ang assertion dito is an appendix is part of the bill.
Yeah, I, I, uh, I can he, hear you cloud, yeah, loud and clearly. If we can, uh, add it to the appendix, why not include it directly to the bill? But anyway, again, I submit to the, uh, wisdom of the majority. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much for your kind understanding and, uh, we can now proceed.
Mister Speaker, I move to adopt, uh, to approve. BTA.
Terminate na muna? Na terminate na ba period of amendments?
Yes, Mister Speaker. I move to terminate the period of amendment, Mister Speaker.
So, um, there's no emotion to terminate the period of amendments, mabilis masyado to? BTA bill number one three one?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
You'll be seconded, there any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
I move to approve. BTA bill one three one, based on committee report numbers twenty seven and thirty four, subject to amendment and subject to style, Mister Speaker.
There's no emotion to approve BTA proposed, BTA bill number one, uh, BTA bill number one three one, subject to the amendments and, uh, style. There any second? You'll be seconded, there any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved, we now proceed to voting by Viva Boche. To those who are in favor of this bill, BTA bill number one three one, please say aye.
Aye.
To those who are against, say nay. Oh, the ayes clearly have it.
Next, Mister Speaker, is BTA bill number one three two, based on committee report numbers twenty eight and thirty five, Mister Speaker. Uh, I move to open the period of interpolation and debate.
BTA bill number one three two?
Yes, Mister Speaker.
This is number four. Uh, there's now a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate on BTA bill number one three two.
Yes.
You'll be seconded, there any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize MP Jumbo, Matalam.
Jumbo ba pangalan nito, hindi ah?
Jafar, Apollo, Mikael.
Basta, Jumbo, Matalam. You are recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mister Speaker, uh. Sandali lang po ito, maliit lang yung tanong ko, Mister Speaker, at sigurado ako hindi ka tatawag ng one minute suspension.
Madali lang.
Sinisigurado ko lang yung Mister Speaker, pero bago ko itanong sa proponent natin, Mister Speaker. Meron, uh, I would like to express my full support in crea, in the creation of these municipalities, Mister Speaker. In fact, isa po ko sa una nagbigay ng resolusyon to fast track the creation of these municipalities. Ang tanong ko lang is simple lang, Mister Speaker, uh, uh, sa, uh, bill number one three two, kasi magkakaroon tayo ng, uh, kalituan sa pangalan, Mister Speaker. Nung, uh, ating panukalang, uh, bill number one three two. Uh, sa pangalang Kaabakan, Mister Speaker, because dito po galing itong mga munisipyo na to, sa municipality of Kabakan, of North Cotabato, and kung, kung titingnan po natin maigi, Mister Speaker, yung Kaabakan, dinagdagan lang natin ang A. So, ganun pa rin po, kung pakikinggan natin, baka magkaroon tay, magkaroon tayo ng kalituan, Mister Speaker, I would just like to ask, Mister Speaker, the reason or the rationale behind, Mister Speaker, of the name, Mister Speaker?
Sponsor may answer?
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. Uh, it sounds similar, Kabakan, Kaabakan. Uh, for the information of everybody, uh, the, the original name of Kabakan is Kaabakan. This is, uh, a root word from a Muslim, Maginda ng Dylekka, Kaabakan, uh, source, because Kabakan is the rice granary in North Cotabato before, so that's why it was called Kaabakan. But for, uh, for clarity and no confusion, uh, we will adopt any, we are open for, uh, suggestion, provided that the word Kaabakan is still there. In, in proper time, in the period of amendment, uh, we will accept, uh, suggestions. Insala.
Uh, alhamdulillah, Mister Speaker, and I reserve, uh, my suggestion for the period of amendments, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I now move to terminate the period of interpolations and debate.
There's now a motion to terminate the period by interpolation and debate. You'll be seconded, is there any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to open the period of amendments.
There's now a motion to open the period of amendments. You'll be seconded. There any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
May we recognize MP Matalam, once again, Mister Speaker.
MP Matalam is recognized.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mister Speaker, uh, da, dahil sa kanilang taliwanag, Mister Speaker, ng, ang Kaabakan ang totoong pangalan ng dating Kabakan. And it seems na medyo, uh, it's stuck on me na, yun ang original na pangalan niyang nga lang, ang problema, eh, eh, medyo similar siya sa existing municipality ng North Cotabato. I would like to suggest, Mister Speaker, dahil ito ay ang totoong pangalan niya, Kaabakan, dagdagan na lang po natin ang old Kaabakan para hindi po magkaroon ng kalituan, Mister Speaker.
So, what, we, are you conforming to the proposal in the bill or?
May, Mister Speaker, this is, uh, uh, the agreed, uh, uh, proposal, Mister Speaker, as, uh, old Kaabakan, uh, stating the originality, as Kabakan ang original na pangalan ng area, Mister Speaker.
I, yes, Mister Speaker?
Yes, sponsor may answer.
Uh. Maybe that is the correct, old Kaabakan. Because talagang Kaabakan talaga, pero na, na short siya, so in short, I am accept your amendment.
The name will, the name now will be old Kaabakan?
Old Kabakan.
Or old Kabakan?
Kaabakan ang original kasi.
Oh, so.
Kaabakan.
Old Kaabakan?
Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mrs., uh, Speaker.
Any more amendments?
Uh, that's it, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much.
Mister Speaker, if you remember, there's a continuing amendment of, from MP Bay Intan Ampatuan pertaining to LMB and the.
Usual accounting and auditing rules.
Can we hear from the proponent if the continuing?
Yes, Mister Speaker, we accept the continuing amendment of, uh, MP Bay Intan Ampatuan.
We have to mention that in every bill, uh, the continuing amendments ni Bay Intan. For every bill that we will take up.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
So, Mister Speaker, with that, I move to terminate the period of amendments.
The, there's a motion to pe, to terminate the period of amendments on BTA bill number one three two, you'll be seconded, is there any objection? Chair here stands, same is hereby approved.
I move to approve BTA bill number one thirty two as, uh, amended and subject to style, Mister Speaker.
There is now a motion to approve BTA bill number one three two as amended and subject to style. Is there any, uh, second? You'll be seconded, is there any objection? There being none, same is hereby approved. We will now proceed to voting by Viva Boche for BTA bill number one three two. To those who are in favor, say aye. To those who are not in favor, say nay. May na bumoto ng nay. But not recorded. So, the, the ayes have it.
May we proceed to BTA Bill number one thirty three based on committee report numbers twenty five and thirty six, Mister Speaker, I now move to dispense with the period of interpolations and debate.
There's an now emotion to consider BTA Bill number one three three and move to dispense with the interpolation and debate, is there any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? No objection, so the motion is approved.
I move to open the period of amendments, Mister Speaker.
There's now a motion to open the period of amendments for BTA Bill number one three three, is there any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, on behalf of MP Bay Intan Ampatuan, I would like to uh register the continuing amendment, Mister Speaker, particularly on the insertion of LMB and subject to usual accounting and auditing rules and regu- regulations under section six of the bill, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, we accept the continuing amendment of uh Bay Intan, but it, Bay Engineer MP, Bay Intan Ampatuan.
Yes, uh, on six.
The amendments is accepted. So, no more?
Yes, uh, on section six and eight, for the record, Mister Speaker.
Yes, we have, I have already ma- uh manifested our acceptance on both amendments, Mister Speaker.
I now move to terminate the period of amendments.
There is now a motion to terminate the period of amendments. Julie seconded, is there any objection? May pagkain doon sa loob. Uh, same is hereby approved.
I move to approve B- BTA Bill number one three three, subject to amendment and style, Mister Speaker.
There is now a motion to approve BTA Bill number one three three, subject to amendments and uh, with the corresponding amend- with amendments and uh, subject to style. There any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Oh, wala raw. Approved.
May we proceed to voting?
We will now proceed to the voting uh, on BTA Bill number three three, one three three for, by Viva Vote. To those who are in favor of BTA Bill number one three three, say aye. To those who are against, say nay. The ayes have it. BTA Bill number one three three is approved.
Mister Speaker, thank you. Next is BTA Bill number one three four, Mister Speaker. Based on committee report numbers twenty nine and thirty seven, Mister Speaker, uh, my, I move to consider the same. And uh, I move to dispense with the period of interpolation and debate, Mister Speaker.
There's no emotion to consider BTA Bill number one three four and the motion includes the dispense uh, the, the dispensation of, to dispense with the uh, period of interpolation and debate. Is there any second? Is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
I move to open the period of amendments, Mister Speaker.
There's now a motion to open the period of amendments. Julie seconded, there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
Similar to the previous manifestation, I would like to make a motion on behalf of MP Bay Intan Ampatuan on her continuing amendments to include uh, LMB and the phrase subject to usual accounting and auditing rules and regulations in section six and eight of the bill, Mister Speaker.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Amendments accepted.
I move to terminate with the period of amendments.
There's a now motion to terminate the period of amendments. There any second? Julie seconded, there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
I move to approve BTA Bill number one three four with amendments and subject to style.
There is now a motion to approve BTA Bill number one three four as amended and subject to style. Any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved. We will now proceed to vote on B- BTA Bill number one three four. To, to those who are in favor, say aye. To those who are in favor, say nay. The ayes have it.
Next is BTA Bill number one three five, based on committee report numbers thirty and thirty eight, Mister Speaker. I move to consider uh, the said committee reports and uh, yes, Mister Speaker, and move to open the period of interpolations, Mister Speaker.
There's a motion to consider BTA Bill number one three five, the committee report, and uh uh, move further for the open uh, opening of the interpolation and debate. Is there any second? Julie seconded, there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved. Period of interpolation and debate on BTA Bill number one three five is now opened.
May we recognize MP Bay Intan Ampatuan, Mister.
The honorable Bay Intan Ampatuan is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. In addition to my continuing proposed amendments, uh, I would like to request that the secretary at the
Interpolation and debate pa tayo, huh? Amendments na ba o interpolation and debate?
Mister Speaker, I thought she was going to interpolate. I uh, move to terminate the period of interpolations, Mister Speaker.
There's now a motion to terminate the period of interpolation and debate. Julie seconded, there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
I move to open the period of amendments.
There's now a motion to open the period of amendments for BTA Bill number one three five and its corresponding committee reports. Julie seconded, there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
Um, MP Bay Intan Ampatuan.
We recognize MP Bay Intan Ampatuan.
Mister uh, Speaker, in addition to my continuing um, proposed amendments on section six and section eight and the insertion of the Land Management Bureau, um, I would like to request the secretary at to flash on the screen because in the committee report, uh, next one, um, the barangays of Makasendeg uh, from Pikit and Tapudok from Alyosan is not included, and uh, it should be included in the committee report, uh, as a proposed amendment, Mister Speaker.
Sponsor.
Makasendeg and Tapudok.
Thank you for pointing that out. Uh, we gladly accept the proposed amendment.
Accepted.
And the continuing proposed amendments?
Accepted.
Again, uh, we accept the continuing Ampatuan amendments on all bills.
Mister Speaker, I now move to terminate the period of amendments.
There's now a motion to terminate the period of amendments for BTA Bill number one three five, is there any second? Is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
I move to approve BTA Bill number one three five, subject uh, with amendments and subject to style.
There's an emotion, there's now a motion to approve BTA Bill number one three five as amended and subject to style. Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved. We will now proceed to voting by Viva Vote. To those who are in favor of BTA Bill number one three five as amended, say aye. To those not in favor, say nay. So, the ayes have it. BTA Bill number one three five is approved on second reading.
Finally, Mister Speaker, BTA Bill number one three six, based on committee report numbers thirty one and thirty nine. Uh, I move to consider the same and uh dispense with the period of uh, interpolation and debate, Mister Speaker.
There is now a motion to consider BTA Bill number one three six with its corresponding committee reports uh, and dispense with the period of interpolation and debate. Is there any objection? Is there any second? Is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
I move to, I move to open the period of amendments, Mister Speaker.
There is now a motion to open the period of amendments. There any second? Julie seconded, there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, uh, same manifestation to uh, say it on behalf of MP Bay Intan Ampatuan, her continuing amendments, particularly in the insertion of LMB and uh, subject.
Ano S M B, San Miguel Bill? Ano S M B?
Lights, li- Land Management Bureau.
I don't know.
Land Management Bureau.
Land Management Bureau, LMB, hindi. And the continuing amendments for
For the phrase, Mister Speaker.
Usual accounting and auditing rules. Seven?
Mister Speaker, we will now give our final and last acceptance of the amendment. We accept the amendment of uh, MP Bay Intan.
So, the amendments is accepted. Floor leader.
Mister Speaker, alhamdulillah, may I uh, um, may I move to approve BTA Bill? At the close, the period of amendments.
There is now a motion to close the period of amendments. Julie seconded, there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to approve BTA Bill number one three six as amended and subject to style, Mister Speaker.
There is now a motion to approve BTA Bill number one three six as amended, subject to style. Is there any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved. Floor leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend the session until.
Ipaprob natin muna by Viva Vote.
Ay, Viva Vote.
Do not listen to Omar. He's disturbing you, he's, he's.
Mister Speaker, I move that uh, we vote on one uh, BTA Bill number one three six by V- Viva Vote, Mister Speaker.
There is now a motion to approve BTA Bill number one three six by Viva Vote. There any second? Julie seconded, is there any objection? Chair here's none, same is hereby approved. To those who are in favor of uh, to those who are in favor of the bill, say aye. To those who are not in favor, say nay. The ayes have it. The bill, BTA Bill one three six is approved on second reading. Is there now a motion to adjourn, to suspend until tomorrow? Yes, MP Ras.
Uh, Mister Speaker, uh, tomorrow would be the third and final reading. And usually, uh, on third and final readings, we have the final copy of the bill. And recently, we agreed that uh, the, the meets and bounds will be appendices to the bill. So, we hope that the, that the, every, every bill, uh, proposed bill will have its attached uh, meets and bounds as an appendix.
If there is none, then we can postpone the approval to next week.
Mister Speaker?
Yes, Mister uh, Deputy Speaker, uh, Raul Salintago. Take a muna, take a muna. Floor leader, what is your comment on uh the manifestation of MP Ras Mitmog about the meets and bounds? Are we ready tomorrow?
Mister Speaker, one minute suspension, Mister.
One minute suspension. One minute suspension. The floor leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Will you answer the query of, uh, MP Ras' mitmog?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Uh, when we print the final copies of the bills for tomorrow, we will have, uh, appendices to them, Mr. Speaker.
Satisfied, Your Honor.
The answer is yes. Basta magkakaroon. So, any more question? The MP Ali Santi is recognized. You have the floor.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. This concerns about the committee report of the Commission Finance, Budget Management and the Committee Local Government pertaining to the naming of one municipality which they called Kaabakan, Northern Kaabakan. If you'll notice in the document presented to us, uh, this, uh, Parliament Bill 132, they called it Kabakan. Ngayon Kaabakan na. But if you look into the committee report on budget, finance budget management, it is called Northern Kaabak- Kabakan. So, I would like to suggest, Mr. Speaker, that, uh, the co- the two committee shall, should reconcile before we can finalize tomorrow. The report.
You already, already reconciled, uh, earlier, uh, the Aida Silongan, Minister Aida Silo, already answered that query, uh, yung name which was raised by Jumbo Matalam earlier. So, they have agreed, uh, the final on the amendments. When we were in the period of amendments, we have agreed that, uh, it will be called, uh, Old Kabakan, Kabakan.
Why, why, why include the word Old Kabakan? I think Kabakan is, uh, good enough.
Yes, uh, but, uh...
Kabakan.
It is now, uh...
It should be Kaabakan only. Now, no use of old Kabakan.
But the sponsor have agreed and the body have agreed to the amendments as Old Kabakan.
Tama ba? I still, Mr. Speaker, I share the view that, uh, the original word, the root word of this is, uh, Abakan. As pointed out earlier, it's in the form of being an agricultural land, it's an old rice granary. Kabakan, Kaabakan. So, you don't need to call it Old Kabakan. Just Kabakan is good enough for us. I just don't know, but that's how I look at it.
So, anyway, approved now on second reading, uh, the Old Kabakan. So, that's beyanas now.
So, it will be called Municipality of Old Kabakan? I do not know if the younger...
It iya, tanarinig ni MP Ali Santi. Di mo narinig kanina?
Uh, no, I have heard it.
And then, did you hear the, during the period of amendments? Approve na to eh.
Wait, ang, ang, ang ala ko nag approve, which I have already...
And then, did you hear when we were talking about the amendments?
Yes, I was, uh, in fact, I was listening tentatively, uh, religiously when I heard the root word, Abakan.
No, 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 no.
They made it Kabakan.
Did you hear the earlier amendments before we approved the bill?
Okay. Okay. I just want to put on recall.
Okay, thank you very much.
Even if it was, uh, even if it was agreed, I just want to put it on recall that my views should be also...
The manifestation of the honorable gentleman is reco- is, uh, noted.
I, I, I am still very young. I am only 37 years old.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. duly noted, gentleman. The floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, MP Matalam.
Mr. Speaker, kasi may natakel yung kanina na approve natin, uh, akala ko kasi, Mr. Speaker, yung pangalan ng Old Kabakan, eh, kung i, kung kuwan natin is Municipality of O.K. So, kaya kung, kung kuwan...
Tapos na tayo, Jango.
Mr. Speaker.
I think tapos na tayo dyan. We are, uh, we are crying over spilled milk. I will not entertain similar manifestation.
I move to suspend until one, one o'clock tomorrow, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion to suspend the session until one o'clock tomorrow? You, you always seconded. Same is here by approve.
We would like to...